It's sad to say, summer is almost over. But with that said, let us stand and salute our flag. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Mr. Conway.
Here.
Ms. Dougherty.
Here.
Ms. Fattacante. Mr. Leahy.
Here.
Mr. Leary.
Here.
Ms. Martin.
Here.
Mayor Caulfield.
Here.
Seven present.
We will get into the agenda. First of all, I want to address the special honor of a business, and I want to recognize Madam Superintendent.
Would you be referring to the minutes, Your Honor?
Excuse me?
Accept the minutes?
Well, the special honor of a business is next on the agenda. Roll call, special honor of a business.
Which is the minutes, Your Honor, thank you, which is the minutes, absolutely. Yes, Madam Superintendent, the minutes?
Approve the executive session of April 15th, 2008, executive session minutes of June 4th, 2008, executive session of July 16th, 2008, and the regular school committee meeting of July 16th, 2008, all which were in your packet.
Move approval, Your Honor.
All right, hold it right there. Madam Superintendent, I thought you wanted to discuss classroom sizes on special honor of a business.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mayor, I thought it was you managed a new business.
Okay.
But I can do it now if you prefer.
If that falls on the special honor of a business?
I, it could, okay. I wanted to bring to the committee's attention that today at noon, I did receive an email from the Parent Information Center with regards to class sizes in K and 1 and 3 throughout the district. And I just would like the committee to know that we are concerned at this point in time about the enrollment and the numbers in those classes. The average right now in kindergarten are between, across the district, between class sizes 22 to 23, grade 1, 23 to 24, and grade 3, 24 to 25. Classroom capacity is 22. And again, I apologize for bringing this to the floor without having conversation with any of you before now, but I do so because it is a critical issue that we will be dealing with tomorrow morning, first thing. And it's the result of numerous factors, one being, of course, the closing of the Varnum School. We do appreciate the fact that the first day of school, all of these students may not be in attendance, and so some of these numbers at that time may be reduced. But I do think it's critical that at this time of year, where the Parent Information Center is working extremely hard to place students, that I do feel that our, some parents in our community may become frustrated, one, when they don't get the placement of their choice. And we'd like to work with them to get the placement of their choice. But with numbers like this, it makes it increasingly difficult for people to get the placement that they want in our waitlist, just increase in number by the day. So I just think, not only for the committee to know, but to take this opportunity to share with the community at large, that we are facing increasingly high enrollment numbers in those three grade levels across the system. And we will be looking at that data tomorrow. Next action steps will be to actually close enrollment in some of those schools at those grade levels, and again, giving people even less option of where their kids will go. So that may result, again, in people not being pleased and calling you or calling my office to say, you know, I only have three choices right now of where my child can go in those grade levels, and that's not satisfactory to me. So I just want us all to be aware that these are the issues we're presently facing. And I did talk with the principal earlier today as well. He has significant concerns about class sizes in his kindergarten class, which averaged between 24 and 25. And when I said, when I asked him, you know, obviously, the budget is extremely tight, and I'm not exactly sure how we would address it, but if another class were to be made in his school, what would he do? And he says, Chris, I don't have another classroom in the school for the class. So again, this goes to the point of why I will have to close particular grade levels at particular buildings, because there's just no more room to move. Thank you. Sorry, Your Honor.
It's okay, Madam Superintendent.
Through you, Mr. Mayor, I'd like to ask Dr. Scott, do you have any idea, or your staff have any idea, what the numbers were last year in comparison to what the numbers are going to be this year? Were you giving like 24 and 25? And what were they last year? Do you have any idea?
Thank you for the question, Mr. Conway. I don't have that data on me this evening, because literally, I just received this email at 5:30. That's why I didn't have a conversation with any of you about any of this, and I bring it to the floor without all of you knowing this concern. But I think it's safe to say that historically, you have been able to keep pretty well within the guidelines that have been set out, but this year, I think, is somewhat different, not only because of the school closing, but also because of the 55 positions we had to lay off within the budget, even though they're retirements, or they were absorbed in some other way. And so those kind of cuts, and we've been able to make those sort of cuts over the last few years, sometimes get forgotten about, because people forget what, how much services we used to have. Well, this is where you see it. You see it in larger class sizes, because you've cut those positions, and this is what they look like.
That actually comes to my second question, then. In other words, when we went through the budget, the positions that were eliminated, it would have an effect on this number?
Thank you for that. And I can't speak to that in its entirety, so it wouldn't be fair, because again, I haven't done my homework on this point, but this is the conversation that will happen with the assistant and the deputy tomorrow morning in concert with the Parent Information Director. So I just wouldn't feel comfortable to comment, but I'm just saying, generically speaking, in global terms, when you close a school, and when, not just the cuts even from this year, but from other years as well, at some time, it's going to hit your class sizes, and this data tells us that that time is here.
Okay, I thank you very much.
Thank you.
Before I recognize, Ms. Fattacante, can I make a suggestion that the superintendent investigate ways and means of addressing this problem?
Uh huh.
She just received this information at 5:30 this evening, and probably have a special meeting, I think is a very important issue. Either a subcommittee or a meeting of the whole, and let the superintendent describe and illustrate how we could address this problem. Ms. Fattacante?
Thank you, Your Honor. Madam Superintendent, you indicated that you're probably going to start cutting off enrollments in certain schools because of the numbers. Can you give us an indication of what schools are currently becoming over-enrolled?
I can't give you a complete representation of what that looks like till I look at the data tomorrow morning. But I can say that I, I guess it's best not just to mention, till I give you a complete list, until I look at the data, but it will be more than one.
Okay. Just to follow up, Your Honor, so when you say you're going to think about closing enrollment, do you have a date of when you think you're going to make that happen, or have we already begun to do that?
Thank you. Again, I think that action needs to be taken tomorrow.
Okay.
Because I just don't want to frustrate families. They need to know that it's very difficult, once you assign a family to a school, to unassign them and to relocate them, and it's even more difficult, as you can appreciate, once school starts to do that. So I really do think that class sizes of 24 and 25, instructionally and educationally, is just not sound at a K level, and that's the situation we find ourselves in as of this minute tonight. And so I do bring it, we do know that there are two factors that drive quality education that gets delivered in the classroom, and that's the caliber and best practices of the classroom teacher and classroom size. We have great teachers. Right now, I'm worried about our classroom size.
Ms. Martin?
Thank you. Just in terms of maybe some additional information that might be provided to us after you've had a chance to review the situation. Understanding how much of this is actual new, unanticipated students coming into the district that could affect our overall student population? And I would personally like an update in terms of how that affects our October 15th numbers and the actual calculation that will happen at the state level in terms of the per-student allocation that we receive, how that is, will that be impacted for this specific year? Or is that something you can remind me, is that basically calculated against next year? If we have more students this year, do we get a higher rate, do we get a higher number in terms of that calculation based on the state funding formula?
Yes, the October 1 report, which is, note, which is our enrollment report, does drive the FY09 budget. So that monies.
So if we, I'm sorry.
That's okay. No, I was just going to say, just to address your question with regards to if it's an enrollment issue, because we have an increase in enrollment. But unfortunately, looking at the numbers, we, I think it's more about closing the school and putting more kids in various schools. And I do think, so, and our overall number, district-wide, is slightly down compared to the last number that I saw. But again, I don't want to give actual numbers till I do that homework, so I appreciate that that should be in the report, just so that we have a complete report for you. So we will give you last year's numbers and what the numbers tell us they look like this year, just projected, even though it won't be October 1 numbers. And again, it's a difficult situation.
I absolutely agree. So I'll look forward to getting the additional information.
I think that at this point in time, first of all, I want to thank the superintendent for bringing this forward and addressing the committee. And Madam Superintendent, if you can keep the committee informed.
Yes.
We will have a special meeting, or a meeting of the whole, or a subcommittee meeting to address this issue.
Thank you.
And we will certainly make ways and means to benefit the children and make this positive, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other discussion? Accept the communication and place it on file by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Martin. The communication is placed on file. Now, minutes.
Your Honor, I would move approval to accept the minutes as read by the superintendent.
What minutes?
The minutes of April 15th, June 4th, July 16th, and the regular meeting of July 16th, Your Honor.
Well, the only, the only minutes that this mayor can really support are the regular school committee meeting and the executive session of July 16th.
All right, Your Honor.
All the other minutes are totally wrong.
Okay. So I would make a motion to sever items 1 and 2, and that we take those up separately.
Okay, when do we accept the minutes of July 16th?
Your Honor, can we just, what's the problem with the minutes?
What's the problem with the minutes?
Yeah.
Tuesday, April 15th, there's no roll call. Who was there at the meeting? June 4th meeting, this is all I have for June 4th. And it says it's respectfully submitted by Solicitor Christine O'Connor. And that's wrong. And on the April 15th minutes, who recorded those minutes? Was it Jay Lang who took the minutes? And once of a meeting, April 15th, that was on a Tuesday evening.
Your Honor, might I ask the city solicitor if she could help clarify the situation? Thank you.
I don't know that I can clarify the entire situation, but...
But part of it would be helpful.
No problem. The, as far as the June 4th minutes, these were the sole minutes that were taken by me in the absence of anybody else available to take minutes. Obviously, our office does not typically, in fact, never takes minutes. These minutes, though, were from the June 4th meeting that started at 8:15, and they were submitted by me, the June 4th minutes.
I just want to let the committee know, I have, this would never happen in the city council. These executive minutes are very, very important. I have one piece of paper for Tuesday, April 15th, no roll call. What was the discussion in the second meeting of, that was adjourned 11:00 PM? That's all I have. That's all I have.
Your Honor, I think that's the second half of one of the other minutes.
The meeting for Tuesday, April 15th said... The meeting adjourned at 8:30 PM. The second page, all I have is the meeting adjourned at 11:00 PM. What adjourned? What meeting? What?
I'm sorry, the meeting of June 4th.
But that's all I have.
No, but there is a first page to that.
They were supposed to be stapled together, and yours must have come unstappled, Your Honor, I apologize.
That's all I have.
Okay.
If I may, the June 4th minutes were the minutes that I had taken. And there are, there were two motions. The first motion appears on the first page of the, of those minutes, and the second motion appears on the second, on the second page. And one was a 4-2 vote, one was a 5-1 vote.
Madam Solicitor, did you respectfully submit these on behalf of Carla Brooks-Bayer?
Yes, there was nobody, when we arrived there, there was nobody to take the minutes, so I took the minutes at the June 4th meeting, and these are the minutes. Yep.
Your Honor, what is your wish?
Well, now that I have the minutes, I can, I can look at and read.
Okay. Would you like to delay them until the next meeting?
Yes.
Okay.
And I want to know what happened to the minutes of the May 26th meeting. Who recorded those minutes?
We'll have a conversation about that.
We'll have it right here in the open, public.
Madam, former superintendent Carla Brooks-Bayer took those minutes, Your Honor, and I do not know where they are.
Nobody knows where those minutes are.
I believe if you called the former superintendent, you might be able to ask her. But, Your Honor, those minutes were never submitted to the Lowell School Committee, nor were they submitted to your office. So we are all at a loss, Your Honor.
Who recorded the minutes?
Former superintendent Carla Brooks-Bayer.
And who recorded all the other minutes of the executive session?
I believe, as City Solicitor O'Connor indicated, she recorded the minutes for June 4th.
Right, and who recorded the minutes of the other meeting?
I believe...
July 16th was the superintendent.
Yeah, July 16th, Your Honor, it was the superintendent. And then the 15th, Your Honor, the draft minutes, I believe, was it Assistant Superintendent Lang?
Yeah, and the draft that I have from the school department indicates that the April 15th meeting I was not at, minutes were submitted by Jay Lang, as well as, this might have been Jackie Doherty.
Excuse me, it was me.
Yep, yep.
And the vice chair.
After Assistant Superintendent Jay Lang left the meeting, we continued to have a discussion, which I wrote the paragraph at the bottom. There was no decision made except to reconvene with the entire committee and to invite the city solicitor to attend.
So the person who's recording the minutes left the meeting?
Because that portion of the meeting involved that person, so it wasn't appropriate for him to stay. Once he left, we continued the discussion, and I took over taking the minutes. And if you look at the bottom paragraph, it's at that point that we decided we would reconvene when the entire committee could be there, and we would ask the city solicitor to attend so we could get legal advice before going forward. So those decisions were recorded and are included in this page regarding the April 15th meeting.
So what's the wish of the body?
I'd like to find where the May 26th meeting minutes are, if that's possible. I didn't know that they were missing, I was not around when that came out.
Madam Superintendent?
Mayor, I do think it's important, I guess, at this point in time, to know that the request was made for the minutes. June did call and ask the previous superintendent for them, and we do not have them, and she does not have them. So I just didn't want the committee to call.
Houdini has them. That's who has them.
And if I can, if I can just also say, just going forward, I believe that this issue around these executive minutes, going forward, I think it's somewhat difficult for people who are involved in whatever the issue is dealing with, taking the minutes. I think that's putting people in...
Absolutely.
Historically, I know you guys are just following procedures, this is the way it's always been done, et cetera. But I think if we can just, if we look going forward, best practice may be to ask the secretary of the school committee to come into the executive session and to take the executive session minutes, so that none of you are put in a situation that's very uncomfortable, that you feel, these are, you know, they're challenging topics and conversations that you're having, and to be requested and required to take minutes at the same time as you're trying to make your points, is, I think, is asking a lot of you. And I think it's also asking a lot of, if I was the superintendent, and it's about my contract, and I'm expected to take minutes and deal with all the dynamics in the room, I just think it's a lot, and I think it puts people in conflict of interest positions that they don't want to be in, and they're just trying to do a good job. And so I think no mal-intent, but I just, or bad intention, but I think going forward, I would like the committee to visit this, and I'm not sure how or what form it takes, but just so that it's done in a professional way, that there's no risk of, that's not my representation of that issue, and I'm involved in the issue.
I agree with you, Madam Superintendent. And I'll tell you how the council does it. The city clerk goes into executive sessions and records the minutes. Nobody else, especially a person who might be involved in that discussion. I'll recognize Mr. Conway first and then Ms. Fattacante.
I think with the obvious confusion that we have, that's presented to us at this point, I think I would, I'd like to make a motion that we delay acceptance of these minutes until the next meeting, until we can take a good look at this and analyze it before we vote on it. I don't feel comfortable at this point voting on this, on these minutes.
Have a second?
So the first three, you're going to delay the first three on executive session?
Second? Mr. Leahy, all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Motion carries. The minutes for the executive sessions.
I'm going to vote nay on that, Your Honor.
One roll call?
I'm voting nay.
Okay.
Because we are, now that we know through Dr. Scott that we've already contacted the former superintendent, and she doesn't have the minutes, I'm not sure what a delay would get us.
The motion is to delay acceptance of all the minutes of all meetings, the executive session, not just that one meeting.
Right, but I don't see any point in delaying it, is what I'm saying. Thank you.
Your Honor, for, just so that, through you, Your Honor, to Madam Superintendent. Madam Superintendent, based upon the school committee rules and policies.
Yes.
You are the secretary to the school committee.
I understand.
Okay. All right. Just want to clarify that, Your Honor, thank you.
Roll call of the motion.
Just in case you were thinking it was somebody else, but you are our, you know, amongst any and other duties.
Honor?
Yes, Madam Superintendent.
To, please. I understand that I am, but I guess, I don't know...
I'm the recording secretary.
She's the recording secretary, right.
This is a suit, and...
You're looking for a recording secretary.
They come after you, not me.
Okay. So I misspoke, that it's not the secretary of the school committee, but the recording secretary of the school committee. Might just make this issue go away for all of you, just not to put you guys in a bad position. And it's obviously of an interest of mine to also make it go away.
Roll call of the motion?
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
To delay.
To delay.
Ms. Dougherty.
No.
Ms. Fattacante.
No.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
No.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Four ayes, three nays, the delay passed.
A gentleman has had his hand up, and I've been very patient, he's been very patient with me. Can I offer a suspension of the rules to allow this gentleman to speak? Does he want to speak on this particular issue? Anyone has a problem, will you suspend the rules to allow this gentleman to speak? Motion to suspend rules by Mr. Leary, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor of the suspension of the rules, signify by saying aye. Any opposed, suspensions of an order? Please come to the microphone and give us your name and address.
I've used the microphone before. My name's George Stammers, taxpayer, Lowell, lived in Lowell, just worked all my life, and worked in corporate industry, I'm an environmental engineer. And I just walked in, and a little offense to everybody, but you spend 10, 15 minutes discussing about a missing minutes for a meeting, or actually, a few meetings that you've been missing. And I have a solution to that, is why don't you create a hardbound log book? And that book travels meeting to meeting, or it stays in your meeting area permanently, it never leaves that room. Everybody signs it. If there's anything special you want to add to the book, you could add to it. You could put the dates, you could put the meetings, and the book would never get lost. Everybody would have to sign it before they leave the room, or go on vacation, or travel to Portsmouth, or Montez Vineyard, or wherever it is. It would be a permanently bound book. No pages would be allowed to tear off of it. You'd never lose the book. And you could always refer to the book as your permanent meeting log. I worked in corporate industry, and that's what we had. We didn't rely on computer memos, we didn't commute on handouts that got lost in file cabinets. It was a permanently bound book, and as Mr. Caulfield said half an hour ago, this has never happened, how many years of the meeting, council meetings?
Well, I've been here 21 years, and executive session meeting...
I think that's your solution, and I'm not making any waves, but it's just a suggestion, and you can do what you want with it. Thank you for letting me speak.
Thank you. Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, and I want to, I agree with the superintendent regarding the fact that certain folks probably shouldn't be recording secretary in the middle of executive sessions, especially the city solicitor, who's our attorney. What I want to do now, and I don't know if it's appropriate, but I don't need to wait to make my decision on it. I think I'm going to make a motion, now that we have our recording secretary, be the one who's officially doing all our executive session minutes going forward. That way, there's no conflict of interest of any employee, any committee member, our legal representation, it's clear cut, the person's already recording secretary. We do not have a lot of executive minutes. But I think going forward, that's probably the most intelligent manner that we should be utilizing, mimicking what the city council is doing very effectively. And I make that a form of a motion.
Thank you. Any more discussion on this?
Suspend the rules for Mr. Leary, for him to bring in the motion.
All in favor of the suspension of the rules, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Mr. Leary's seconded.
Mr. Leary's second.
Mr. Leary's motion.
Ms. Fattacante's motion. All in favor of the suspension, signify by saying aye. Any opposed? Suspensions of an order.
What I said earlier, just basically, I'm going to make a motion that a recording secretary be our official secretary for all executive sessions. Thank you.
All in favor of the motion?
I need a second.
Second.
Why don't we have a roll call, just to make sure? I mean, it's something new.
Roll call.
You want an official one. Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Now, let's move on with the agenda. If we can have an approval of the minutes of July 16th. Rule of approval by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Ms. Fattacante. All in favor of accepting those minutes and putting them on file? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed?
Aye.
The minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Permission to enter?
Thank you. Permission to enter August 20th. We do have a few contracts. Edco Collaborative, $80,664. North Shore Education Consortium, $131,000, $131,180. And Teach for Teachers, $80,000.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval of Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
Take a roll call, please.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Memorials by James Leary. Brian Blackburn, brother-in-law of Ruth Buckley, teacher of the, at the Patoka Memorial School, and Gary Buckley, teacher at Lowell High School Freshman Academy. By Regina Fattacante. Henry Greaves, father of Theresa Clark, teacher at the Green Health School, and Glenda Greaves, substitute teacher. Shirley Rathbunner, retired professional at the Green Health School. By the committee as a whole. Margaret Ambassot, mother of Ann Bibenew, Lowell High School teacher. And Philip G. Hayden, 2003 Lowell High School graduate. Let us all rise and dock in chambers and offer a moment of silence for these people. Thank you, may they rest in peace. Any unfinished business? No? No? None? Okay. Public participation? Any public participation? Moving on with the agenda, we have motions.
Your Honor?
Yes.
I'm sorry. I just wanted to ask you through the superintendent and the committee, did we have, did we want to take our guests up first before we go through all the motions?
Planned Parenthood?
Yeah.
I think what the, Mr. Leahy is asking, if we want to move up the issue of Planned Parenthood.
Sure.
So I'm going to make a motion, Your Honor, to take that out of order.
Seconded by Mr. Leahy. All in favor?
Aye.
Signify by saying aye, and I think that's a wise choice.
That way, our guests don't have to stay through all our motions.
We will now entertain the people who are here to discuss the Planned Parenthood. Madam Superintendent?
Thank you, Mayor. Yes, this evening, we have the opportunity to meet with Planned Parenthood to discuss nine lessons that we're planning to introduce at the middle school level, at each grade level, five, six, sorry, sixth, seventh, and eighth grade level. We presently have an abstinence-only curriculum, and this would make the curriculum more complete, still obviously in compliance with Department of Education regulations. And this issue came to our attention as an issue that needed to be addressed, and a more complete education needed to be provided. And I'll let Planned Parenthood talk about the particulars, and I think it's important that the school committee ask any questions that they have around the curriculum and any issues that you hear going to be addressed this evening, not only for our benefit, but for our audience at home who are tuning in, because I'm sure people do have questions around this curriculum. I do think it's important to put this in context, that the school department really is committed to addressing the fact that Lowell Public Schools has the ninth highest pregnancy rate, teen pregnancy rate, in the state. So we do want to be responsible to our students to ensure that they are receiving proper and appropriate, developmentally appropriate, education, and that we do respect the right of families and parents to, as we always have here in Lowell, to sign a waiver if they do not want their child to attend. We presently offer sex education classes, and parents have the right to sign a waiver to say they do not want their child to participate. That policy, of course, does not change with this new addition, just making the curriculum more complete. And so I think maybe it would be best at this point if I turned it over to Planned Parenthood, so we could have a deeper understanding of what's being brought forward, and then to have more discussion at that time.
Madam Superintendent, may I just recognize committee member?
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Fattackany.
We also, I've asked our athletic director, James DiProfiou, also to stay tonight, Your Honor, because we also have an abstinence education program. And I think that if we're going to be responsible, we need to recognize that the abstinence component does play some reality in our school system, but we would be foolish and not responsible if we did not offer some kind of comprehensive sexual education program. Now, I'm not, I'm not talking about some of the programs that are currently out on the market, but I'm talking some factual education for our young people, because, Your Honor, we have the ninth highest pregnancy rate in the Commonwealth of Massachusetts. So I think that both of those components together really go a long way into serving our students. I think what we have to figure out is how we blend them, how we make them both work for us. So I would like to also hear, Your Honor, from A.D. DiProfiou this evening, about the kind of abstinence program we have, and what Planned Parenthood could offer us, and how we're going to bring that together to create the most comprehensive program for our students possible. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Just to clarify, definitely an abstinence-only program is part of the complete package, and Planned Parenthood will be addressing that, because, of course, we do want to embrace that component of sex ed. So that is a part of it, that that's not changing, it's just being more complete. I think that's the issue for us, just to make sure that we are completing the, for example, when we're teaching a science class, and we know what the curriculum needs to be in grade seven, we need to complete, you know, the life cycle, the weather cycle. We're not going to stop halfway through any of those. Right now, our program, it used to be, my understanding is, it used to be broader in scope than it presently is.
Yes.
And it's just been recently, actually, with No Child Left Behind, what happened just across the country, and I believe Parenthood will share some of this history with our community, but our sex education programs across the country used to be more robust than they presently are. And what happened was, when the present administration took office in Washington, they began these abstinence-only programs. And what has resulted across the country is a skyrocketing teen pregnancy rate, and Massachusetts is no different, unfortunately. So my understanding is, before 2003, we did have a more robust sex ed program than we presently do. So it's more just restoring balance to the program, and again, giving families the right to say, no thanks, this is between my child, my church, whatever belief systems you have. I still strongly recommend the committee keep that policy in place and give parents options to do it. But at the same time, I don't think it's, as long as, which I believe this curriculum to be, there are nine lessons. Our staff will be trained on how to deliver these nine lessons in a professional way. Again, Planned Parenthood will talk to the quality of these lessons, which I'm sure you'll be very impressed with. But I believe, because they're consistent with the guidelines set out by the Department of Education, it's not something that's in violation of any of that curriculum guidelines, that it's not for me as the superintendent of schools not to offer to families who do choose to have their children educated.
You're welcome. Before we bring the Planned Parenthood people forward, there are two things this committee and this superintendent can do. One is nothing, and two, to address this issue. And as the superintendent had a meeting in the mayor's reception room a few weeks back, the city of Lowell ranks ninth in the state in teen pregnancy, and ninth in the state in the dropouts. That is something we shouldn't be proud of. So anyone who would like to come to the podium and address the committee and the viewing audience at home, please come forward. And I'll also let anyone who wants to speak after the, be addressed by the Planned Parenthood.
Thank you for this invitation, and committee, thank you for your time. My name is Jen Slonecker, I'm the Director of Education at Planned Parenthood, Lake of Massachusetts. And just briefly, while Planned Parenthood is most often known for our clinical services, we have also been providing comprehensive sex education in the schools of Massachusetts for over 30 years. And thank you so much for opening up this conversation about what is comprehensive sex education. And it's really important for us to put out the understanding that comprehensive sex education includes information and lessons about abstinence, absolutely. Because the goal of our curriculum, which is called Get Real, is to delay the initiation of sex for our young students. But where comprehensive sex education goes a step further is that it also provides information about protection methods, such as condoms and birth control. It provides medically accurate and factually appropriate information about those protection methods. So it is absolutely the combination of the two that is so important to the comprehensive sex education approach. So specifically, teen parenting and teen pregnancy, as you've talked about, is the leading cause for failure to graduate rates for young teen women. And it is a high cause for young teen men as well. So with being the number nine in the state in terms of teen birth rates, that is, can be connected to the dropout rate, as Mayor Caulfield made that connection. So in terms of comprehensive sex education, what we have developed is a curriculum that is called Get Real. It is nine lessons in each grade, in sixth, seventh, and eighth grade. The central tenet of the curriculum is based around healthy relationships and developing the skills of healthy relationships. Specifically, the curriculum is based in the social-emotional learning framework, which emphasizes the skills of self-awareness, self-management, awareness of others, relationship skills, and decision-making skills. Through these 27 lessons, we have mapped the curriculum to the Massachusetts Health Ed curriculum frameworks. So in each lesson, you'll see which frameworks from the state are addressed, and which components of sexual health education. As I said, the long-term objective of the curriculum is to delay the initiation of sex, as well as to promote the correct and consistent use of protection methods for those students who are already sexually active, and for when they become sexually active in the future. We acknowledge and recognize that parents are the primary sexuality educators of their children, and we actively engage parents in the sex education through Get Real. There are family activities that go home as homework at the end of each lesson that reflect on what was taught in the lesson that day, as well as provide an opportunity for a conversation for the child and their parent, or another caring adult in their lives who they feel safe talking to about this topic. This gives the opportunity for the teachers who are teaching Get Real to impart the facts, but they turn the students to their parents and to their community to talk about the beliefs and values that their community and their family hold. We also, as well as that, offer a separate program called Let's Be Honest, that is specifically geared towards parents. It's a series of five workshops that can be brought into the school to augment the Get Real program, or can be done separately in other community agencies. Those are specifically for parents to learn the tips and techniques for how to engage in these conversations with their youth when they're coming home with these questions. So the curriculum itself, Dr. Scott has done a great job giving you an overview. It is 27 lessons over the three years of sixth, seventh, and eighth grade, so that's nine lessons per year. It is flexible. It focuses on healthy relationships, communication skills, as well as the nuts and bolts of sex education, like anatomy, physiology, puberty, sexually transmitted infections, and protection methods. What is unique about this curriculum and its offering is that we are offering initial training for the teachers, as Dr. Scott mentioned, as well as ongoing technical support for the teachers as they implement this in the classroom. And all of this will be offered to the Lowell School District at no cost. In terms of the research-based work that has gone into the development of Get Real, we have been piloting the curriculum for two years, and we've contracted with Wellesley Centers for Women Research Association, that has done a formative evaluation of the curriculum as we've been creating it and tweaking it and revising it. And some of the things that they found is that the students in our pilot schools had an increased knowledge of sexuality-related anatomy and physiology and protection methods. They had more positive attitudes towards relationship skills, and they had improvements in their communication skills. Additionally, and what is one of the most surprising findings, that is fantastic, is that what we found is that after the students had participated in our course, they ranked parents and teachers as their highest and most trusted source of information on sex and sexuality, over their peers and over the media. And those rates of trust, and those rates of who they would turn to, increased throughout the participation in the program. So I am happy to entertain any questions. We would love to make this an ongoing conversation with the Lowell School Committee, as well as the Lowell School System and the community of Lowell as well. Just to say, the Get Real really does help young people navigate what is a sex-saturated culture, and it promotes these conversations to happen at home. So providing the students and the parents the information they need, and allowing them to have those conversations together about their values and beliefs about sex and sexuality.
Thank you. Madam Superintendent?
Could you please clarify, I just, if you're working with?
Microphone on?
Could you pleasantly clarify for our school community, the other school districts within the Commonwealth that are working and partnering with you presently?
Sure.
To deliver this message?
Sure. We've piloted the program in schools in the Boston District, as well as in Springfield. We have trained four Boston Middle Schools, we've trained teachers and nurses at four Boston Public Middle Schools, and they will begin implementation this year. They have not implemented yet.
They're on the same timeline?
Sorry?
Sorry, they're just beginning as well?
They're just beginning. They were trained last spring, but they'll be implementing this year. And we are beginning our last round of piloting in Bromfield School in Harvard.
Thank you.
So Madam Superintendent?
Bromfield School, Harvard, Mass.
You would have to bring this before the committee for an official vote to approve this program?
Your Honor, may I?
Wait, I was just going to ask for the superintendent's response.
When I ask that question, Mayor, my understanding is that the school committee does not vote curriculum. So if I was to bring a math program to you, you wouldn't vote that, and you wouldn't vote a literacy curriculum. However, the reason why I bring this forward to you this evening, because I do think it's something that we want to collectively be on the same page and support, and I want to be respectful of the wishes, even though I understand that perhaps it doesn't need to be a curriculum vote. We don't vote curriculum here. But I do think that there is a policy in place where you have a letter, where people are going to opt out of it. So it is a little bit different. So I'm, I believe I've answered that completely.
But you would want our blessing, and you certainly have mine.
Exactly. As I said to Planned Parenthood when, you know, this issue was brought to my attention, I invited them here this evening, so that you would have the opportunity to speak with them directly, because it is an issue for people that is, you know, a hot, hot topic. So I really do want people to have the opportunity to discuss in full before we...
And just one last thing before I recognize Ms. Fattackany. I just want to make it sure to the parents that if they don't want their child to be involved with these programs, they don't have to be.
That's correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Ms. Fattackany?
I appreciate the superintendent recognizing that this is a hot-button issue. I think we have two options. One, I think that we, as a committee, probably need to sit down, again, with Planned Parenthood, and look at some of the curriculum, and here's why, Your Honor. Because on Lesson Six, I don't know, of any grade level, if I get a phone call, I would like to be able to say, this is why we're teaching Lesson Six. This is the impetus behind it, and so that we, as a committee, can understand, so that when we get the phone calls, because we will get the phone calls, Planned Parenthood won't get them, we're able to explain and define why we're doing something in particular. I think it's important for us to do this, because as it's been indicated, Your Honor, we have a huge dropout rate. And this, for this committee to sit together and wonder where we're going to have a daycare center, means we're obviously concerned with our pregnancy rate. We have, we have a daycare center because we don't want young people to drop out of school. It'd be wonderful if we never had to have a daycare center, but that's not the reality. So I'm looking for my colleagues to help me figure out how we want to do this. Do we want to have a special meeting of the school committee? Do we want to send it to curriculum? And that the school committee gets invited to the curriculum subcommittee? Because I think that, I think we need to do this.
You have to create a dialogue.
Right. Absolutely. But when we get the phone calls, I'd like to be able to defend why we did something. And so I need to be educated.
I think to do nothing is totally wrong.
Absolutely, Your Honor. I'm not advocating that at all.
No, I know that.
Right.
Mr. Conway, then Ms. Doherty, and then Ms. Martin.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that what Ms. Fattackany said, I think is a good idea, to send that to curriculum, so that we can take a good look at it and analyze it, and debate that situation right there. I do have a question. If a parent opts to, and I'm glad you clarified this, that if a parent doesn't want his son or his daughter to participate in the program, then they can opt out. The question I have is, what does that student do during that particular time? What type, what curriculum is put in its place for that child?
That will have to be more or less discussed, and there's a lot of eyes that dot, and a lot of teeth across. So I would imagine they could help us with that.
Does the superintendent, do you have any idea, or the assistant superintendent of curriculum have any idea of what that student would do if they decided not to opt into the, into the program?
I think that in part of our planning of being able to implement the program, that we would have to look at the standards that need to be taught to students according to the abstinence-based programs that we've had. So we would have to look at the curriculum and make sure that there was a parallel program that students were taught. So then, we always get permission for whatever program we've had, that included the abstinence programs that we've had. So we would have to design, as we go through this process, what in fact students would have for curricula, and they would have to be engaged in. have for curricula, and they would have to be engaged in engaging curriculum if they were, in fact, not included. So that would be important, and that's part of this planning. We would have to look at, you know, what will happen if you opted to be in the program, and if you did not opt to be, because there are specific standards that we would have to teach. So that, at this particular point, that's not planned, but we would have to develop that as we go forward with our health and science educators.
Well, I think that is important to take a look at, because I think you certainly can anticipate that there are parents that will not opt to...
You could create a study class, many, many things that...
Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, can I recognize the committee first, and I'll get back to you?
Oh, yeah. It was just to address Mr. Conway's point. Again, I think it's important for us to not lose sight that we presently have a program that parents can opt their kids out of. So I'm thinking that this issue is presently addressed, that we don't have children sitting there when they sign these waivers saying, "No, my child's not going to participate in this curriculum," that that work is already done. So, you know, there is something in place when our parents say that this curriculum piece isn't going to be taught to my child. So whatever is presently going on, I'm not saying we can't enhance it, I'm not saying we can't approve upon it, but I don't want to leave the impression that, right now, our kids are twiddling their thumbs when parents say, "No, I don't want my child to participate in this particular program." Because, to be clear, we already have a program in place. This is only a boat, offering a more robust, complete, rigorous curriculum in this particular curriculum strand that the Department of Education has outlined that we need to be doing, just as we would in the area of physics, math, et cetera. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Doherty?
Thank you, Your Honor. I'd just like to comment, as a parent of a middle school and high school students, I agree with the comment made earlier that we live in a very sexually-charged culture, and any kind of help parents can get in how to guide our children to make good decisions, I'm all for it. I'd also like to add to the superintendent's last comments that we do have a current opt-out policy for the abstinence-based program. I'm not clear what happens to those children whose parents opt out, because I was not a parent who opted out of that program. But I think it absolutely makes sense to bring this to the curriculum subcommittee, not only to familiarize ourselves with the curriculum, which I agree, it's important that we know what's in our schools so we can take the calls, but also to look at how we communicate with parents, even at that initial letter saying you can opt out. I know, when I got the letter for our abstinence-based program, I picked up the phone and called the teacher to say, "What specifically do you cover and don't you cover?" But that's me. But how about if we, as a school department, took the initiative to, and maybe it's already in the curriculum, I'm not sure, but when we send a letter out to parents, we are clear about, "This is the agenda, what your child's going to learn in the sixth grade. And if you want to opt out, here are some choices." To really enhance our communication around this whole topic, because, as was mentioned earlier, you know, we see it at the high school and even earlier now, you know, children having babies, and how it impacts their future and our community as a whole. So it is a very important issue, and I think that going forward, the curriculum subcommittee makes sense as a place to look at all these pieces together. And I just, I'm in favor of doing that. Thank you.
Ms. Martin?
Oh, thank you very much, Ms. Mayor. I absolutely concur with so much of what we've talked about tonight, and I know we're really only getting started, so that's kind of exciting. But I do want to be clear on a couple of quick things. I think the idea that Ms. Fattacanti brought up of referring this to the curriculum and instruction subcommittee makes perfect sense. I think that's a great way for, certainly, the committee as a whole to be able to have some more in-depth conversations. I do just wanted to point out also that that subcommittee is where curriculum is discussed and recommended by the school committee. So it is something that we have done historically. So as we move forward, I think that that's the place where a lot of these conversations happen. Certainly, our math curriculum is something that was discussed there, and, you know, we had competing curricula, curriculi, there goes my Latin from Lowell High School, sorry. And there was a recommendation made by the school committee moving forward on that. So I think that that is the traditional method that we use. And I think the idea of the full committee being able to be profoundly well-informed about each step of this process so that we can be able to discuss it with parents, discuss it with other constituents, discuss it with teachers, as issues may arise, I think that is absolutely the best course for us. And I look forward to learning even more about the program.
Mr. Leahy?
Sure, thank you. The only thing I wanted to add to the comments is, when we do, I would assume we're going to pass these out, six, the student, you'd get a whole packet, right, when you, when this curriculum comes up? But it would...
I guess what gets passed out, I think, to Mrs. Martin's point, or Ms. Martin's point, I think it's important for us to, that is the package that's presently given to us.
Right.
But it doesn't mean that has to go out in that format. So we're going to have a discussion with, I mean, I think at this, at subcommittee meeting, I think it's important that we invite school personnel, who are experts in the field of health ed, to come in and discuss. You know, we did discuss this issue, just this whole presentation, with our administrators district-wide, so they know that we're coming here tonight, and it's going to be discussed in a public forum to move this conversation. They, like I, didn't know how it would, you know, it's a work in progress, and we just all want to work together to do the best here for our students. So what the final product looks like, I wasn't thinking that we would necessarily know that, you know, tonight, presenting that or not.
No, my only point would just be that if we handed out a syllabus to the parents at the beginning of the year with dates that, when the discussions may happen...
Oh, yes, most definitely.
So that you'll know, you know, this is going to happen in October, January, February, and May, and that would be really helpful for parents, so...
Right, I appreciate that. And the letter, opting out, I think, to Ms. Doherty's point, would, that would accompany that letter.
Okay, all right, sure, that'd be great.
I mean, it can be discussed in full, but I think that's the suggestion. I think it's a good one.
Yeah, the point I just want to make is that we don't get it on Tuesday, that the discussion has happened Thursday, you know what I mean? As a parent, I'd like to know a week or two ahead, yeah.
Sure.
Right. Thank you.
Okay.
Mr. Leary?
Yes? That's the key piece, especially with the family activities going home after each lesson, the transparency and the engagement of the parents early on initially is a key component of the success, so that's built in. Also, in question about the opt-out rates, we know that across the state, the opt-out rate for comprehensive sex ed classes is at about 1% or a little under, and that's been consistent with the programs where we've piloted as well.
I just have just a few questions. This, and this is the benefit to parents in the viewing audience. How many schools are you involved in the Planned Parenthood?
We're currently...
In the Commonwealth of Massachusetts?
We're currently, we have, where we have either piloted or where we are going to be training, we are currently involved with 20 schools.
20 schools?
Mm-hmm.
And by you being involved with those schools, have you, has the pregnancy rate, dropout rate, has decreased because of your input?
That's something that we are not able to see. At this point, we have just been piloting. We are actually about to launch into a five-year-long impact evaluation to measure the actual behavior change rates at the end of, the students would start in the evaluation in sixth grade, and they would be measured in 10th grade, to see what kind of effect the curriculum has had.
Okay, thank you. If there's anyone in the audience who'd want to come to the microphone to discuss this particular issue, if there's anyone, yes.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor, and a member of the school committee.
Could you speak right into that microphone?
Sure.
There you go.
Thanks for the opportunity to come and address you on this issue, and as a parent, I think we could all agree, as parents, that this is a very uncomfortable subject for everybody. Nobody wants to have this conversation with their kids, and our kids don't want to have it with us. Yeah, and this isn't too comfortable either. And I think we could all agree that nobody want, if in a perfect world, we would all love to see our kids graduate from high school, having done nothing more than hold hands and maybe kiss a boy on the cheek, in a perfect world. But we don't live in a perfect world. And I can share my experience. I have a 21-year-old granddaughter, the apple of my eye, and she was in Orange County, California, going through junior high school and high school, and they had an abstinence-only program. And the experience of her schoolmates was that a lot of them got pregnant. And these were good kids. These were nice, sweet kids. And the problem is that their parents just didn't talk about it, and the school gave them absolutely no information, and in fact, gave them bad information. They gave them inaccurate information about the effectiveness of birth control, for instance. I can tell you that my wife and I talked to my daughter when she was quite young, when she was about 13 or so, and we progressively, over the years, gave her more and more information, with really nothing held back and no questions she couldn't ask. As far as I know, nothing bad happened. She certainly never got pregnant. So it works. Parents are the first answer, and they're the best answer, but in the absence of that, the schools have to step in, and the schools have to give accurate, real, and helpful information. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Is there anyone else who'd like to? Okay. I want to thank the Planned Parenthood Organization for being here, but more importantly, I want to thank the superintendent for stepping to the plate and bringing this issue forward. I applaud you, Madam Superintendent, for doing that, and hopefully, we can make this program be successful with the administration and the school committee, and make a difference. Ms. Fattacanti?
Thank you, Your Honor. And maybe when we sit down to have this meeting, Mr. DiProffio might also be a valuable asset to us, so that he can help us figure out how we're going to mold what we're doing to what we're going to be doing.
Would he like to address the committee now?
Possibly. Mr. DiProffio, would you like to address the committee very quickly? We did ask you to stay.
We can get you one.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I'm prepared.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, members of the committee. Good evening, Dr. Scott, and I'm the central administration. As a health education teacher at Lowell High School, we did provide a comprehensive curriculum in a graduation requirement, Health Education A and Health Education B, which our course is taught primarily to freshmen and sophomores. So a comprehensive approach is essential to student well-being. In my past three years as the director of the freshman academy, we knew that the number-one factor for students to drop out of school, and this is all over the country, is they do not have the sufficient credits to move on to the next year. And one of the big impediments to earning the sufficient credits to moving on is attendance at school. So it was one of our big focuses through the committee and through the central administration was to improve attendance. And of course, it becomes extremely difficult on a young lady if she becomes pregnant. Obviously, that's going to have an impact on school attendance, and I think that we feel, as a school, that the comprehensive approach, and of course, that the later in life, and certainly after your first steps of formal education, which is a high school diploma, for a young man not to become a dad before that point, and a young lady not to become a mother, is certainly to their benefit and to the community's benefit, as they'll be able to complete their education at the first stages, and then move on through our plan of K-14 or K-16 education right here in the city. You're welcome.
Thank you very much. Thank you. No more discussion on this particular issue?
So, Your Honor, I'm going to make a formal motion that we send this to, send this to this curriculum subcommittee, for the curriculum subcommittee to hold a public meeting, which the full committee can attend, so that we are able to invite Planned Parenthood to be there, so that we can further understand the curriculum that we will be presenting.
Second, most second, Ms. Doherty, all in favor of the motion, signify by standing in your opposed.
Aye.
The motion carries, and I think, I don't have to say this, you know this, the most important thing that we do here is to keep the parents informed on every aspect of this particular program. And if we do that, then I think it will work.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Okay. Moving on with the agenda. Under motions, thank you very much for being here. Under motions, motion by David Conway to ask the superintendent to explore options for securing federal, state, corporate, and other private funds to be used for the benefit of the Lowell School System through the services of a non-salried grant writer, seconded by Mr. Leary. Mr. Conway?
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think that everyone will agree the fact that we are certainly experiencing bad times economically, not just in the city of Lowell, but also in the state and across the country. And I think that it's very difficult for us, at this particular point, to keep on going back to the taxpayer and asking him or her for additional monies. The money is not there. Everyone seems to be, obviously, they're hurting. They're having a difficult time paying their bills. Many of the mortgages, they're running into problems paying that, there's foreclosures, and therefore, the last thing they need is a school committee group to go back and ask for more money. And I think that we need, as a school committee, to be, to become as creative as possible. And I thought that this might be a way to do it. I realize that on the federal and the state level, many of the monies are drying up. There's no doubt about that, as I just previously mentioned. However, I think that there is still monies available in the corporate world and also the nonprofit organizations. I think that, you know, many of these corporations have funds available. They have funds put aside just for educational purposes, and I think we need to tap into those sources. And I think in the past, those are areas that were perhaps neglected. And I think this is the last, the last thing that we need to do, of course, is to create a job that is going to be put on the taxpayer's shoulders by hiring a grant writer for X amount of dollars. We can't afford it. I think it's pretty obvious. However, I think what is done in the, should we say, the business world, which has been mentioned many, many times on this floor, that we could have someone, and what I'm asking is the superintendent, perhaps, take a look at this process, and maybe we can bring on board an individual that we would not give any benefits to, and that basically, they would go out and try to acquire funds from federal or state, but in particular corporations, and be perhaps paid a percentage of the monies that are brought in. What is the downside to that? There is no money that is given out to the Lowell School District. We're not paying any money out. We're not going to be giving any benefits out. Now, I've mentioned this to a number of people, and I said, "Is it possible that we could get someone like this?" And some people said, "Well, you get what you pay for." I've had other individuals say to me, very learned individuals, say, "If I was retired, this might be something I would like to do, is perhaps get involved. I know how to write grants. I'm not worried about monies, but yet, I'd still like to be able to participate and also keep my hands in the educational field." So that's why I would, I would hope my colleagues would support me in this motion. And once again, no monies to the district. And what I would like to do, Your Honor, is I'd like to ask the superintendent if she could weigh in on this and see what, see what her thoughts are on this subject. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, go ahead.
Come up.
If I could just jump in real quick on that. And I appreciate Mr. Conway's motion. In fact, I didn't know we actually had this motion. The finance subcommittee actually sat down last Thursday, Jackie Doherty and John Leahy and the superintendent and Jay Lang. We actually discussed this. We actually had made recommendations to the superintendent to explore a consultant to look at specific for-profit grants, something like Microsoft or other types of groups or agencies. There's a very, as a superintendent who's very well-versed in this from our conversations, and I'll get into this more in the finance subcommittee portion, writing these grants are not just as simple as putting, stringing along a few sentences. They have to be very, very meticulous. They also have to meet our curriculum. So there's something the superintendent is going to be sitting down, and has already began the process of sitting down to put something together. Mr. Conway's motion is not in conflict with what we've already done and we've approved to bring before the full committee, so I definitely support it, more the merrier. But this is something that's going to be complex, difficult, but definitely worthwhile to explore, because it could have a lasting benefit, not only financially, but for our overall curriculum. Again, there's ethic issues, there's financial issues. One area we're looking at, again, is consultants, more probably regarding specific people who are already in the industry doing this, out there for other types of agencies. So I can explain more... So I can explain more during the finance, and the superintendent, who's already a step ahead of all of us with this, can probably add more to it. Thank you.
Ms. Spott?
Just in terms of as you're responding, you may want to include this or certainly as we move forward, as we talk more about it. I would like to get some information. I mean, this is obviously a position that did exist in those Lowell public schools. It'd be interesting to see how successful it was. I know it was eliminated a number of years ago, I think even prior to my joining the school committee, but I know it's existed in a couple different shapes over the years. It would be interesting to find out how successful it was. In terms of kind of the, as you're pulling together a proposal for us to consider, one thing I would have concerns about, just in terms of the way we structured this relationship, I don't know who the person would be, obviously, but the idea being that certainly, you know, the Nationwide Professional Association for Fundraising and Development Professionals does have some pretty strong language regarding the way compensation packages can be built in terms of creating professional and, I guess, appropriate in terms of the professional standards that are in place across the country. And one of the, I guess, red flags that comes up is this idea of a percentage, you know, what you raise, you receive a percentage of it. That's certainly something that's very strongly frowned upon in terms of professional development and institutional advancement standards across the country. The idea of a consultant is obviously something very different, where there is a pre-agreed amount that is part of the compensation package. And I think that as you're considering that, I think that's something to keep in mind. And I think that, you know, as we move forward, again, having the information in terms of how we structure this position, having a consultant managing our relationships with, I want to say DOE, but ESE, whatever it is now, and/or even Federal Department of Education professionals, I have concerns about. It seems like that's a professional-level person that needs to be monitoring and stewarding those relationships. The idea of, I'm far more open to the idea of corporate opportunities, private foundation opportunities, you know, it's something obviously that we're involved with in a lot of different ways in our schools and this could perhaps be a way that we professionalize and centralize maybe those efforts to help strengthen them across the district. So those are just some concerns as you're formulating, maybe not your answer tonight, but your long-term answer, that I think we should take into consideration. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent, would you like to comment?
Yes, thank you. And thank you, Ms. Martin. I do appreciate and share all your concerns in all those areas. And Mr. Conway and I were able to have a conversation about the finance meeting the other night, and I did share with him that you raised, in the finance committee, this issue was raised and that you expressed a similar interest as he did, and that I do believe that people are on the same page and I do understand now from the majority of the committee that you would like this looked at. I would like to clarify, just Ms. Martin, when you mentioned, we presently do have grant writers employed that deal with Department of Education grants and federal grants. And the other night at the finance committee, and I mean, we can revisit this in that committee, but it was discussed at that time that I was charged to look at corporate sponsors such, corporate and private foundations so that this wouldn't be touching the Department of Education grants or federal grants, that that piece is in place. And we presently receive grants from those agencies and those are salaried positions for us. So this instead would be to look at the Bill Melinda, for example, the Bill Melinda Gates Foundation, Fidelity has opportunities for school districts, the Annenberg Foundation, the Carnegie Foundation. So those would be the type, and any other grant suggestions or any other place that you can suggest, we'll definitely look into. But as was discussed, and again, Mr. Conway and the finance committee appreciate the fact that these grants are written by professionals, it's a large amount of money that you're asking for. So I wouldn't personally assume that I could write the grant successfully because I just haven't had that training or experience to do that. And I know that because when I worked in Wayland as the Mass Science Director, I applied for the Toyota Grant. They support mass science initiatives and it was not successful. So I took that as a hint that maybe next time I should work with somebody who's more experienced in the field. It is a science to writing these grants if you're going to be successful. So I do encourage the committee. Again, I don't think it's necessarily in our financial best interest, as was discussed at the finance meeting, to employ someone and, you know, and all the costs that are associated with that, healthcare benefits, et cetera, when it may be a number of different people you want to contract, somebody who has experience dealing with the Fidelity Grant, somebody who has dealt with Apple or HP or, so it may be, you know, different individuals. But again, to come back to Ms. Martin's point with regards to, I do think the district should stay away from percentages, et cetera, and have a contract that's very specific terms.
Ms. Spott?
No, I just wanted to, and I know that there've been a couple different conversations that have gone on about this between the finance subcommittee and then in the motion tonight, and I appreciate that reassurance because I do think that the whole, I know that in the motion, we're talking about federal and state and I'm assuming that Mr. Conway's going to be amenable to that, to that being considered a separate thing, as opposed to the corporate and private funds, which I think this lends itself very nicely to.
Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, and you may have said it well, I just want to point out that what we talked about the finance subcommittee was that the superintendent and the school committee would be specific, choosing what type of grants we want to go after. So it won't be willy-nilly in terms of, we'll hire a consultant, just go get reading grants. We're going to specifically target something that we need and something we need additional funds for. So it'll be meticulously controlled and meticulously drawn up before we go out and actually hunt for the money, as it were. Thank you.
Mr. Conway and then Madam Superintendent.
Yes, I think just to clarify a couple things. Once again, this is not, I'm not proposing a position that is salaried at all, that under no circumstances, the individual would be put on our payroll as far as benefits are concerned. And I think, second of all, again, trying to take this motion and putting it into a sentence or two, perhaps I could have taken it and put it into a couple paragraphs to maybe explain a little more detail. But obviously, we would need direction, the individual would need direction from the superintendent and her staff on what areas of corporate funds that we might go after, that we certainly wouldn't have a person just sit down in a room and decide that they're going to go after anything and everything and have no idea what that individual is doing. So I think that needless to say, that this person or individuals, maybe more than one individual, why not, that they would have direction from the superintendent's office, I think would certainly make sense. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
I did have that understanding from you, Mr. Conway, that that was your intent. And I'm really glad you brought the point up, Mr. Leary, because I think it's a good one. Because what often happens in school districts is that people start to apply for grants that aren't necessarily in line with their mission and their vision and their goals. And so it creates a lot of confusion and people get off track of what your focus really is. And a lot of work goes into determining your goals and your vision and you want everybody rowing in the same direction. So we don't want anybody veering off to the right or the left when we're all going straight ahead. So thanks for clarifying that.
I just want to make a brief comment here. I think it's an excellent motion. And we can't afford not to have someone writing grants. And we have to be innovative and look for either federal or state grants that could be there. I was in the company, I was at a function, and I was in the company with a superintendent of a large school district in suburbia, and we were discussing this issue. And the person on the stage speaking was their grant writer. And I said, is it worthwhile to have a grant writer? They just brought in $800,000 in grants. And if we're not doing that, shame on us, we should be looking to find ways and means of bringing money into the Lowell school system, whether it's a salary position or a person that comes in and writes grants and gets a percentage of that grant. We can't afford not to have that because if you look around you, everyone else is doing it. So it's a great motion. And all in favor of the motion, signify by saying aye. The motion passes. Thank you, David. Second motion by John Leahy, requests from the superintendent how many safe and drug-free programs we have in the middle school, elementary, high school. The report should detail how many discussions happen per year, in what grade, and on what subject, seconded by Mr. Leary. On your motion?
Thank you. The motion basically speaks for itself. I've had a discussion with the superintendent on this, so it's pretty clear. If we could almost, you know, maybe come up with a syllabus, too, that parents would have an idea of what talks are going to take place and when and what they're about. So that's basically what I'm looking for. Just want to make sure that we are doing this and that we have the appropriate number of talks per year with the, and what grade levels.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any discussion on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed, the motion passes. I have three motions, which I really, yes.
Your Honor?
Yes.
Would you like to come and sit next to me so that you can fully address your three motions? I would love your company.
I would gladly do that.
I'd love your company. Thank you. Gives my colleague an opportunity to, what was that? Yeah, gives my colleague an opportunity to exercise his brain leg.
Thank you. Okay, we have a motion by Mayor Edward Caulfield, request that all the contracts in the Lowell School Department that have not been approved to form by the law department be forwarded to the law department for review. Do I have a second? Mr. Conway, seconded.
Thank you, Madam Chair. The motion is to request that all contracts in the Lowell School Department that have not been approved to form by the law department be forwarded to the law department for review. And it's very simple, that any contracts that the former administration negotiated, they've been brought forward and let the law department and City Hall review those contracts and let the general public know what is in those contracts. That's the gist of the motion.
Thank you. Any comments from my colleagues on this motion? Ms. Fattacanti?
I see the motion that Mayor Caulfield has put on the agenda. My concern is opening up a current contract. So what I would like to do is I would like to forward this to the Personnel Subcommittee and have our attorney, as well as the city solicitor, explain to us pro forma how we would actually go about that process. Because what I don't want to have happen is that we open up a contract and examine the contract and not truly be able to do so legally. So while I understand the mayor's intent, what I would like to do is to not get us in trouble first and then proceed. So what I'd like to do is I'd like to have this go to the Personnel Subcommittee, along with the city solicitor present and our attorney present.
Are you suggesting, then, an amendment to the contract?
An amendment would be, yes, please.
So it would be a substitute motion?
Then we send this to personnel.
Okay, so the-
I just want to state that all these contracts are public records.
Yes.
And the general public should know what's in them.
I'm going to recognize Madam Superintendent. Just a couple things. I think it's important to clarify a conversation that I've had with the city solicitor on this particular motion, just so that I think it's important that we all know where we understand what the issue is here, at least as I see it. And if it's not, if I've misunderstood something, maybe I need further direction. But my understanding is, it's just, I don't believe the issue is to open up any contracts, so I just want that to be stated so that principals tomorrow morning don't come to work thinking their contracts are going to be opened. That's not what I understand is being put on the floor here this evening. My understanding is, is that the contract, as it presently exists, should be just by best practice, reviewed by the city solicitor to ensure that there's no part of that contract or any clause of that contract that's somehow tying, legally tying, the city's hands in any inappropriate way. To your point, I think it's a great idea to have, you know, to refer to whatever, to the Personnel Committee, if that's what you would like, that sounds great. And to have our lawyer also look at the same issues that the city solicitor is looking at. So I don't think it's either one or the other, but I just didn't want to put a rag fly out there or cause concern needlessly. I think the issue is just to look at the contracts to ensure that they are in compliance with the city laws and that there is no fear at this point that we're going to open up any contract and that the salary line or a particular vacation line-
Believe me, the intent of the motion is not a witch hunt.
No, exactly.
But I think it's, has anyone on this committee seen a principal's contract?
We see a wasted plate.
Okay, one at a time, please.
See those contracts.
Absolutely.
That's the gist of the motion.
Absolutely.
So what is the wish of the committee?
The wish is to send it to personnel and have both attorneys there because I think one of the things that we might be able to learn is if there are some issues in any of the contracts that are contrary to what would be in the school department or the city's best interest, we should be alerted to that. So that's as we move forward, we are aware of what those clauses might be that could be damaging to us. So I think this is an educational process for us also.
So we have a substitute motion before us to have the request regarding the contracts to go before the Personnel Subcommittee with the city solicitor and the school committee attorney present to discuss how we go forward. I would need a second on that substitute motion. Ms. Martin has seconded that motion.
But the law department legally has a right to get those contracts after the Personnel Subcommittee looks at them.
Oh, yeah, but the law department's going to be there.
Right.
Can I just, sorry?
Okay, Madam Superintendent and then Mr. Leahy. Just to support your position, Mayor Caulfield, yes, the law department does have a right to these contracts. We have sent them over within 24 hours of them requesting the contracts and we are working with the city solicitor very cooperatively. And it's very supportive, you know, of our contracts and I really do not see, just so the committee knows at this point in time, any particular big issues that are facing us. So I just, although it's good practice that we examine these contracts, I don't want people to think that there's something inherently wrong with them. But I have had a conversation, as Jay Lang has had, and at this point in time, although there is some language in one of the indemnification clauses that needs to be looked at, it's easily addressed, but the main part of the contract that would affect our principals is not an issue.
I think it's very important that this information is brought forward for every member of this committee.
Yes, it's a very good idea, sir. Okay, and Mr. Leahy?
Sure. That's what I was just a little confused on. So, I mean, why wouldn't the city solicitor have these contracts if they're public?
Because they were never turned over to the city solicitor.
Well, they're public. If you're in the public, you can get a copy, right? So why can't the law department get a copy?
That's why I'm bringing the motion forward, John.
No, but they're public records, right? So why can't they get a, I don't understand why they can't get a copy.
Well, I suppose the law department could get down-
She can get them, she does have them.
But I'm trying to do it in a diplomatic way.
Oh, all right. Well, I just, I thought there was a problem. I didn't know. Okay. Because she should have, the law department should have these contracts. That's all, I was confused.
They don't.
Well, they should because they're public.
Okay, let, please.
That's the only thing I don't understand about-
Let's try not to have conversation, so go through the chair.
All right, well, through you, I just didn't understand why.
Okay, so Mr. Leahy's point is they are public documents. I believe as the superintendent has indicated, they are currently at the law department. I think that this idea, as Ms. Fattacanti's substitute motion says, we will have this meeting to see how we go forward, to iron out whatever concerns there may be. I think the documents are at the law department, so that doesn't need to be. Mr. Leary?
Just quickly, too, and I think, obviously, these are open and we want everybody to look at them because that's, it's a public record. I applaud the superintendent for sending them over to the city solicitor. The city solicitor will take a look at them if there's any issues, which there're not going to be any issues, she'll address them. And I think it's appropriate for the Personnel Subcommittee- And I think it's appropriate for the Personnel Subcommittee to follow up with the fact that the city solicitor has them and is going to review them and may have advice that would be of advantage to all of us. So, I think there's really, I don't think there's a big issue here. I think we're all talking about the same thing. I think it's a prudent practice to have the personnel follow up to ensure there's no gaping holes or something that we might have missed, which frankly, we haven't missed anything. Thank you.
Is everyone all set with comments? Then we can just, all those in favor say aye.
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 Substitute motion passes.
Substitute motion passes. The next motion by Mayor Edward Caulfield, request a list of all employees that are receiving stipend. How much is the stipend and for what reason? Do we have a second on that motion? Mr. Leary?
I think the motion speaks for itself. I just want to know if anyone in the system is receiving travel allowances, any stipends, and if they are, the committee should know about it.
Any other discussion? Mr. Leary?
Yeah, and I think it's a timely motion, a great motion. Actually, the Finance Subcommittee actually discussed this last Thursday. Mr. Lang will be providing us a report for our October. We're going to be having bi-monthly meetings of the Finance Subcommittee. We're going to look at actually at a report regarding stipends. One of the interesting things that does come up with stipends, stipends include people teaching summer school. Most of the stipends come back, almost 99.9% of them are through grants. We had a good discussion about grants. Grants pay for almost every single dime that would come out of a particular stipend. But I think the mayor's motion's an excellent motion. I think it's our job as the Finance Subcommittee to monitor that. And with Ms. Doherty and Mr. Leahy on that and Mr. Lang and the superintendent, we're going to be doing that as, as we, since I've been on the Finance Committee, we look at it every year anyway. Thank you.
Any other comments? Mr. Conway?
Could I get a clarification from the superintendent of exactly, what are we, what are we talking about when we, when we mention stipends? I mean, I think we all have a pretty good idea of it, but I just wanted a clarification of what that actually entails.
The teacher's contract in Lowell has a provision that if teachers work in, after school programs or if any additional work that they do after the contract hours, that they may receive a stipend if, in fact, if in fact, there's funding for it. Most of, to just reiterate what Mr. Leary said, most of our, because our general operating budget can't, cannot support a large number of our stipends, the teacher's contract really serves as a way for us to determine what a fair equitable rate of pay would be that we pay through these particular grants that we get from the federal government and through the Department of Education. So, it's $30 an hour in the teacher's contract and a lot of the work that's done in the summer, as Mr. Leary also mentioned, is from grant money as well. But a stipend, we use it in the business to refer to somebody who is on salary, who is doing additional work outside their contracted workday. And even though the monies often do not come from our general operating budget, the rate of $30, which is stipulated in the contract, is used as a guide.
So, it's, I would say that it's fair to, it's fair to say that any additional monies beyond their contract, is that, is that what we're, is that what we're really talking about?
Could be a transportation stipend.
It could be a transportation stipend, but it's not to be, there is additional monies, it depends on whose contract you're talking about within the school department. So, for example, you do have merit-based bonuses in people's contract, that's not considered a stipend. However, you do have principals who perform mentorship, have mentorship responsibilities, that is a stipend. So, it just depends on the job description and how that's been defined within the district, if it's a stipend or if it's a performance bonus or for what, whatever reason it's for. It's determined by the number of...
I can, I can see the $30 an hour, let's say, you know, teachers, obviously, they have workshops and so forth that they're involved with. And I think this is perhaps what the mayor is talking about. But also, I think what, it brings up, I think it also brings up the point that when we take a look at contracts, and I think that the mayor came up with an excellent, an excellent point on this, on his last motion, is looking at those contracts because when I take a look at the salaries of some of the, of some of the principals, I see there's a discrepancy. And I don't know if this, if this has anything to do with the stipends or not because, you know, when you have somebody that is making 100, well, let's put it this way, when there's a difference of $6,000 or $8,000 between two, two principals, I think that probably confuses, I know it confuses me, and I'm sure it confuses the public, on why that actually takes place. Granted, I understand, you know, some of the terminology might be additional degrees, 30 beyond, 60 beyond, however, it certainly doesn't come up to a $6,000 or $7,000. So, I think that these motions here, I think, will help clarify some of that, that information.
Mr. Leary?
Yeah, I appreciate it. I think it's, it's interesting and I, I do applaud the mayor's motion because I think, Mayor, it's a good motion. It's something that we actually, as a Finance Subcommittee, look at every year. And it's a timely motion because it's just the time we start to prepare for our budgets. But the thing that you want to understand and make sure we articulate to the public and to some of our committee members, almost 99.9% of this is specifically grant money for after-school programs or different type of mentoring programs within the system. What we do when we review this each and every year is we look at any anomalies. Say there's an individual, all of a sudden, made an X amount of dollars. We want to find out why that happened. And then to correct that should, should it happen, just to make sure it doesn't happen in the future. Again, one of the interesting stipends is summer school. And that's actually out of our regular budget. So, you know, that's something that we pay teachers to come in and teach summer school to our children who are in need of that benefit. I think the mayor's motion is excellent. I think it's our job to look at each and every expenditure and to be creative and looking for ways to spend our dollar wisely. I think you're going to be happy that your Subcommittee with Mr. Leahy and Mrs. Doherty on it are going to look at these things and bring recommendations with each and every one of you. We encourage the entire committee to attend the meetings because your valuable input is needed. And I appreciate any input regarding looking at things. I think we've done some things already that are creative. You're going to see some things tonight that are creative, that are, that are advantageous, not only to the taxpayer, but to the student. Regarding principals, I think it's interesting to look at one specific individual maybe mentoring another principal to run a school and may receive a stipend. That's something that we can justify and explain and something that we ought to explain to the public and feel comfortable with what we're spending our money on. That's why we take a look at these specific reports. And most of the time, not much comes out of it. Sometimes something that needs correction does come out of it and we take full, you know, advantage of making that correction. I don't know, I want to be negative, but I think, you know, I don't want people to feel that they can't make a mistake in life. People make mistakes. The goal is to correct a mistake and not create into a big hyperbole of someone, hey, they made a mistake, let's jump on them and rip them apart. I think we find mistakes, correct them, and make sure we don't make them again. Thank you.
Mayor Caulfield?
Thank you, Madam Chair. I suppose the word stipend could encompass a lot of things. But what I'm looking for is someone receiving transportation allowances and other stipends they're not entitled to. I'm not talking about a teacher working overtime or getting a stipend for teaching a special class and so forth. That's what I want to know. And that's, that's the gist of the motion.
School Committee, one more. Fatakanti?
Thank you, Madam Chairperson. My concern is that if the committee or administration has granted a stipend to somebody, then that was done for a specific reason. To now call that illegal would, would open up a very different way of looking at it. If it was given to somebody, then it would be legal because either the committee voted on it or somebody at administration or the superintendent agreed to give that person a particular stipend. So, my concern, when your honor says that they are illegal, no, they're not. They're legal because we either voted them or they were granted without any duress to the individual who's receiving it. So, the, my, the mayor said witch hunt a few minutes ago with his prior motion. My concern is that there might be some confusion over why people get certain stipends. I do not want to have anybody dragged through any mud only to find out that, oh, yes, the school committee granted that stipend and it's legal. Or the former superintendent agreed to that stipend and it's legal. That's my concern here when I hear his honor saying that he wants a list of all the employees. Well, those employees technically are getting legal stipends because they have been given them either by this committee or by administration. So, they're not illegal. Now, if we choose to change the policy at some point in time, that's very different. But currently, those stipends are legal. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent?
Thank you. Just a couple of points I would like to make, I think that need to be clarified for the committee tonight and for our viewing audience at home. Mr. Lang, I would like clarification, if I'm correct, on the comment that only the superintendent of schools, the deputy superintendent and the assistant superintendent have a provision within their contracts for travel allowance. Is that correct?
Right.
Which the mayor has referred to as a stipend here this evening. I'd just like that clarified.
Yeah, yes, as far as like a monthly stipend for a travel allowance, those are the only individuals that have that. There are other individuals within the school system that might have jobs that leave them to travel from school to school that are just reimbursed at the IRS rate per the school committee policy for that travel.
Thank you. And the distinction that Mr. Lang is making there again for our audience at home is that there's a difference if somebody travels and they get a mileage rate for the mile...
I don't have a problem with that.
No.
Anyone who uses their car should be reimbursed. My issue here is, Madam Superintendent, is someone receiving a transportation allowance that would, none of us know about, that was granted by the former administration.
That's the point I'm trying to clarify. Mayor Caulfield, is that in fact, when I asked the question during my homework on your motion, that it was clarified with me that those are the only people in your organization who receive a stipend, if that's what you want to call it, for travel are those five individuals. Everybody else receives the mileage rate set by the feds. One other point, clarification, Mr. Conway, you brought up the issue of the salary range that presently exists. And when I asked, just a point of clarification on that point, as it was explained to me, within the principal's contract, there is a provision, hope that's not a bad omen, there is a provision that our principals are able to receive a $2,500 performance bonus during their tenure with us. And it's my understanding as well that the superintendent determines in what year they'll receive that bonus and to what extent they get the full amount of $2,500. So, when you, the other factor that would impact the discrepancy of the wide range is also perhaps how long a principal has been with us. Educational level, there is, there is a scale that the committee has voted on, a salary scale, but what's not reflected on that salary scale is the $2,500 that I just explained three times, as well as in past practice has been that the COLA, the Cost of Living Index, that's bargained by the teachers' union, is also applied to the principals. So, if it's 2% that the teachers get, it's then 2% that the teachers, sorry, that the principals have also received. So, those are some of the variables that are not right on the salary schedule that you may want to look at. Hope that clarified.
Yes, yes, thank you. I'm glad you brought that up because, Madam Superintendent, what, when I took a look at the salaries, what I have in mind is an individual, a principal, that has been in the system for many years and was receiving $5,000, $6,000 less than someone that's been here for, I believe, three or four years. So, that's, that's what I'm talking about, a discrepancy, as far as that's concerned. And as far as Ms. Fatakanti mentions, these being, stipends being legal, I think that everyone would probably agree with that, that they have been, they're legal, whether they're given by the school committee or given by the superintendent. I think that's, that's perfectly clear. But I think that doesn't, we also should probably take a look at those stipends to find out whether they should continue, whether we can afford them. And that's, I think, is a, is an important point. Not that they're legal, not that they're legal or illegal perhaps, but if it's something that we can't afford at this particular point, then we perhaps have to pull back or eliminate them. Thank you.
Mr. Leary?
And I don't want to drag it out. I just want to say I agree with the mayor's motion, that you need to look at every single item. And that's what the Finance Committee has begun to do, and I applaud the motion. There's no conflict with what we're doing. It's actually advantageous to what we're doing. If you don't look at it, you don't know. I'm going to be confident in saying that we're not going to be surprised by anything, but that's why you run the reports, to verify that. That's the intelligent way of doing it. Regarding stipends, about looking at individuals' names and what they're making and how they're making it, a lot more goes into specifics regarding what person's school they're at, how much education they're at, how much timeframe they've actually held a particular position, what skill sets do they bring out, what success levels they bring out. I think it's a great debate to have going forward. We're going to have it in the Finance Subcommittee and we encourage everybody to attend them and we'll have them again here on the floor as well. Thank you.
Mr. Leahy?
Thank you. I just want to make one comment for people watching at home too, that since my colleague here to my left has taken over as the Finance Chair, he has his own seat in Mr. Lang's office and there's nobody that works harder than the Finance Chair, Mr. Leary. Nobody works harder than Mr. Leary, looking at these and working with Mr. Lang every day, I know that. So, I just want to assure people that, you know, Mr. Leary is looking at this with Mr. Lang every, every day. Thank you.
I wonder if we could just move on this?
I was going to say, why don't we then send this, if they're already working on it, then why don't we ask Mr. Leary for a report that gives us an, that addresses the mayor's motion? If the Finance Subcommittee has already begun to look at this, then I would agree. Let's look at all of the stipends that are available because maybe at, when we enter into contract negotiations, we'd like to eliminate some of those. So, if Mr., if the, if Mr. Leary can look at those with his Subcommittee and report back to us so that this full committee would be able to take a look at stipends, why we have them, understand the reason for them, and then determine whether we want to eliminate those in the future or not. So, it does behoove us to take a look at them. So, but if you're already looking at it, I mean, this is already, I don't want to, I don't want to start, I don't want to have another process going where we already have one going on.
Well, I'm wondering if the mayor would be amenable to just amending your motion to say that refer to the Finance Subcommittee. He specifically asked for this stuff and it would go through Finance, the report would come to all of us and we could discuss it again. Do you want to do that?
If the superintendent or a Subcommittee member can furnish me with a list of who is receiving a stipend, that's what I'm looking for.
Absolutely.
And maybe some of us are going to be shocked.
Definitely. Okay, so... So, do you want to refer to the...
So, do you want to just refer it to the...
Sure.
Okay, so we have, we have amended the motion to request a list of all employees that are receiving a stipend, how much is the stipend, for what reason, be referred to the Finance Subcommittee and reported to the committee as a whole.
Thank you.
Okay, so that was made by Mayor Caulfield, seconded by Ms. Fatakanti. All those in favor say aye, please. Any opposed? Motion passes. Okay, the next motion by Mayor Edward Caulfield, request a procedure on overtime throughout the school department and who authorizes overtime. Do I have a second on that? Mr. Conway?
The motion speaks for itself and I just want to make sure that people who are on salaried, people who are receiving a salary, they shouldn't be on overtime. I just want to make sure of that.
Okay, any comments or discussion on this motion?
Through you, Madam Chairperson, to our Assistant Superintendent of Business, are there people who are on salary who are receiving overtime? Could you clarify that?
Yeah, no, I can very easily, no. Anyone who's actually on an annual salary would not qualify to be paid any overtime.
Who approves the overtime, Mr. Lang?
It depends on the department that will be requesting it. But by and large, our actual overtime, it's totally separate from like, say, summer school, those kind of things, would be restricted to clerks, custodians. Custodians to come in and open up a building for activity.
Custodians, if they're working overtime, they're doing it because they have to.
Right, yeah, no administrator would be, no administrator, teacher would be receiving overtime per se. I think in the sense of the word you're thinking of.
Could you furnish this committee with a list of people who receive overtime for work performed, other than custodians and so forth?
Yeah, there wouldn't be, but I'll certainly, I mean, I think...
Well, how about if you do this, furnish the committee with the cost of overtime for fiscal year? Oh, wait.
Are you amending your motion to include cost of overtime? I mean, it seems to me that the motion is very clear. You're looking for a list of people getting overtime. If that list is only custodial and secretarial staff, so be it. If that list is only custodial and secretarial staff, so be it. Let's get the list. And Ms. Fattacanti?
There's probably some security people in there that are probably also getting overtime. May I ask one other question?
Yes.
And this might help to clarify the issue of overtime. Mr. Lang, would a, could a person who is on salary have a second job in the school system which they were paid separately for?
No.
Okay.
That actually would be against the city charter. You can only hold one position within the city at any given time. The only instance could actually happen, you could have a person who's on an annual salary, again, like a teacher or administrator, who has a set work year, maybe they only work the school year. That individual may come and say, work summer school. They may be a teacher or building administrator, but I think that's different from Mr. Caulfield's request.
That's very different. How about coaches? Coaches are, some of them are teachers, but then they have a separate.
Yes, it's very possible, but all of those salaries or stipends are actually called for in the collective bargaining agreements.
Right, okay.
And it's totally separate from their regular work.
All right, thank you. Any more discussion on this motion? Madam Superintendent.
I think it is important to clarify that the various bargaining units that we have, the various unions that we have within the district, their contracts stipulate if they qualify for overtime or not.
Right.
So for example, our teachers do not receive overtime. However, to go back to our earlier discussion this evening when we talked about stipends, if our teachers work in an after-school program, and that's outside their contract at workday, they receive a stipend. Whereas the secretaries and the custodial staff are in a different union, and within their contract, there is a provision, if they work overtime, that they would receive compensation per se.
You know, I and this entire school committee realize that this large school district, there's going to be overtime.
Oh, yeah.
Most definitely. And I'm, you know, the janitors work hard, they have to have overtime to keep the schools clean. I'm looking to see if people are working overtime that they don't deserve, period. And this, what is it, $136 million budget?
Yes.
Huh? $136 million. And we are running on a shoestring. And we better stop running this like a business.
Yes. I appreciate the motion.
That's what Mr. Walmart would do.
Okay, I think we're ready to vote on that motion. All those in favor?
Aye.
Say aye. Any opposed? Motion passes.
Thank you for entertaining those three motions and that lively debate. Moving on with the agenda. Motion by John Leahy to request a superintendent check with the appropriate department to assure that all crosswalks are painted and prepared for the first day of school, seconded by Mr. Leary. On the motion.
Thank you. The motion speaks for itself. Just, this is an annual housekeeping event. Just wanted to let everybody know that we have five days to get all the paint on the crosswalks. Thank you.
That issue was brought in front of the council by council, Rita Mercier, to paint all the crosswalks on Couples Square, and I amended the motion to make sure every crosswalk is painted in the city. So they are in the process of doing that, John. Motion by Jackie Doherty, request a superintendent provide a report to the Technology Subcommittee regarding the status of all school websites, including identification of updating procedures and minimum standards, seconded by Mr. Conway.
Thank you, Your Honor. I think the motion speaks for itself. As we look at getting information out to the community about our schools, obviously the internet and our websites are very important. And I've noticed myself that some of our schools are very up to date, they're really using the websites much more than others. So my intention is to try to really look at where, how we can help schools all get to a high standard of use and updating on the websites. And that's my hope with this report, is that we can start to identify what the challenges are. I know our elementary schools do not all have the computer staff that the middle schools and the high school does, but if there's some way we could think creatively about making sure that every school has an up-to-date, really informational website for parents and the community, I think it would be a benefit. Thank you.
Madam Superintendent.
Thank you for the motion, Ms. Doherty. I have already had conversation with, as you can appreciate, we do not have a lot of people in our technology department at Lowell Public Schools, so we are partnering with the folks here at City Hall who have that expertise, and they are willing to work with us. Mr. Lang, the gentleman that I met with with regards to our website and designing our website and what the website design would look like, I'm sorry, their names?
Yeah, there's two of them. The Chief Financial, Chief Information Officer for the city, Maran Fernandez.
Thank you.
And John Overton is the webpage coordinator, who works with him out of MIS for the city.
Thank you. So that initial conversation has taken place after looking at not only our homepage, but also to address your concerns with regards to, you know, the inconsistencies across the district. And to be fair to the schools and to administration and teachers, because of budget cuts that have occurred over the last five years, that department has been particularly hard hit, and it is very labor-intensive to keep an up-to-date website. With that said, I'm not making excuses. I think we can improve our present website, and in concert with these gentlemen, they are going to help us come up with a template that standardizes our look across our schools, so just template with regards even to information. So staff lists, email addresses, to have a conversation with administration at one of our administrative meetings with regards to a minimum standard of what information we think should be on the website, and they will work with me to set up a template so that people don't have to recreate the wheel 23 times across the, across the system, and that it has a professional look. So the, the issue of keeping it updated, that has not been worked out yet because we do not presently have a lot of people who can do that. So we may have to look at present job descriptions and to see how we can change, alter, adjust to include this piece because web presence is really important for us. It is the 21st century, and many clerical positions in the past didn't have this big technical component, but I do think we do have to build capacity with the staff we have to address this point because I don't see any money anytime soon coming into the budget. So if it is a priority, which it is for this administration, and I believe as well for the school committee, we do need to look at being creative and, and saying, whose job is it? What training do you need? And how is this going to move forward? But I do have some experience of building district websites and school-based websites, and it is a process, so I do ask for your patience with regards to the next six months as we go through this. It is labor-intensive, and I'm not exactly sure all the hurdles we will face, but I appreciate the motion and look forward to providing you with the report.
Any discussion on the motion? If not, all in favor of the motion signify by saying aye. Motion is approved. We are now going to go into subcommittee reports. First report, the ad hoc on building naming subcommittee, Ms. Fattacanti.
Your Honor, I've reported out on this. All we need to do right now is accept the minutes. I've already given the report, so all we need to do is accept the minutes.
Okay. Seconded by Mr. Leary, all in favor, accepting those minutes and placing them on file, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Minutes have been accepted and placed on file.
Same thing with the second one, Your Honor.
Wonderful.
Motion to accept the minutes of the Joint Safety and Subcommittee.
Second.
Second. All in favor, accepting the minutes of the.
Who seconded it? I didn't hear it. I'm sorry. I did. Okay.
All in favor of accepting the minutes of the Joint Safety and Discipline Subcommittee, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
The ayes have it, and the minutes have been accepted.
See how quick I was, Your Honor?
And, what's that?
See how quick I was?
It's wonderful. See, the Red Sox might still be on when we get home.
Yeah, keep dreaming.
The third subcommittee report, Community Partnership Subcommittee, by Chairman, Mr. Conway.
Yes, thank you, Mr. Mayor. We'll make this as brief as possible. Present were myself and Ms. Regina Fattacanti, and the school department personnel, Dr. Chris Scott, Jay Lang, Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations. We started the meeting at 7:54, and I informed the committee that I had spoken with city solicitor Christine O'Connor. She has not come up with a decision yet, a final decision on whether we can have the incentive program for the school department employees as, as was proposed a number of weeks ago. She felt pretty confident that it wouldn't be a problem, and I thought that that particular point, we could perhaps get something done in that subcommittee meeting, and that was to come up with the, the makeup of the Council for Creative Solutions. And the suggestion was by Ms. Fattacanti that we have one representative from each school department, the UTL, School Department Unions, the UTL, LSAA, SEIU, for the creative solutions. Also, which was suggested, that each member of the school committee, all seven of us, pick an individual that we think would be effective on the creative solution committee. And in addition to that, we thought that we would have a city solicitor or someone from the law department, two representatives each from the University of Massachusetts Middlesex Community College, the Lowell Plan Center of Administration, and one representative from, from the Saints Memorial, Lowell General Hospital, Lowell Boys Club and Girls Club, and community teamwork. Again, it was a large number of individuals, I believe it was somewhere around 21 or 22 individuals, and that was accepted by a 2-0 vote. Motion was made by Ms. Fattacanti. And we adjourned at 8:44.
Any discussion or debate on the report by Mr. Conway? If not, motion to accept the report as a report of progress and place it on file by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Ms. Martin. All in favor?
Aye.
The ayes have it. It's been accepted and reported. Next subcommittee report, Special Education Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes, August 13, 2008. Ms. Doherty, Chairman.
Your Honor, the Special Education Subcommittee met on Wednesday, August 13. Present were myself and subcommittee members John Leahy and Connie Martin, as well as James Leary. The, we had one topic on the agenda, and that was to look at out-of-district special education costs. The amount of money that we spend sending students out of Lowell to other schools, either residential or day programs. And it was a breakdown over three years, so we could see how those costs have changed. I don't think it's a surprise that the costs have increased, as most things have increased. They actually have not increased that much, but we're looking at more than $5 million we're spending a year for special education children who are receiving out-of-district services. That doesn't include the breakdown for transportation, which is probably another $3 million anyway. One thing that came out from the subcommittee meeting when looking at this report was, we have quite a number of students who are going out of district for emotional needs. I'm not talking about children with severe emotional needs where there's, where violence or safety to themselves or others is a factor, but emotional needs that are, you know, perhaps costing, let's say, $40,000 a year to educate them at a facility like St. Anne's Home in Methuen or a place like that. And the discussion really centered around our programs here in Lowell, the alternative schools that currently exist, how we might enhance the programs we have in district to keep more of these children attending schools in Lowell, that not only for cost savings, but to keep them in our, in our neighborhoods and provide them with a quality of education, a high quality of education. So the general consensus was to look more closely at these students with emotional needs and look more closely at our alternative programming and the program we have for special education students, and see if we might improve our services and be able to keep more of our students here in Lowell. So that was the general consensus. There was a motion by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leahy, to request an update within six to eight weeks of the start of school on efforts to design new alternative programming and to provide a report on the actual cost of each out-of-district placement that factors in transportation cost, to actually look at the transportation as well. And to discuss the, what's called a circuit breaker reimbursement, which is the state gives us back a percentage of money that we're spending on these out-of-district costs. But the, the general feeling was, we want to move quickly on this, we want to make this a priority. As we go forward, we know that we have students who, you know, who are being sent out of the district that perhaps we could keep in, and to really look at how that might change our programs for special education students so that we have a plan in place, you know, to move forward with it.
Okay.
And the meeting was adjourned at 7:40. I don't know if my colleagues have any comments, but I'm finished.
It is a very costly program throughout the state, and some of those children do need some special care. And some of those children do have to be transported to special schools, and they have special needs, but it is good and wise if we can keep some of those students here and save that cost of transportation. Any debate or anything issues on the motion? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye.
I need motion to accept the report, not me.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. My mind was set on the motion. Accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Conway, seconded by Ms. Fattacani. All in favor of accepting the report? Place it on file. Signify by saying aye. Okay. Let me see. The next subcommittee report is Lowell High School Subcommittee Report and Approval of the Minutes of August 13, 2008. Jackie Doherty, Chairman.
Thank you, Your Honor. I'll be quick. Again, the Lowell High School Subcommittee met on August 13. Present were myself and committee members Regina Fattacanti and Dave Conway. Other committee members present were John Leahy, Jim Leary, and Connie Martin. Also present were Dr. Chris Scott, Superintendent, Jean Franco, Deputy Superintendent, and from the high school, we had Dr. Wendy Jack and Carrie Lynch. We had two items on the agenda. The first one, as you may all recall, we closed the childcare center at Lowell High School, which enabled current high infants, three infants as, at a maximum, could be from our student infants. I'm not saying that clearly, sorry. We closed that childcare center during budget cuts of the spring. So the concern was to look at what's happening to those young mothers and those young parents. Now that they can't, those three infants that we were keeping at the high school, we no longer have that center, where are those students going? And during the conversation, Carrie Lynch reported that they are developing alternative places for teens to bring their children so that they can attend school, working specifically with community teamwork. But in terms of the specific students, we did not have an update. Are they coming to school in September? You know, what is their situation? So we had a motion by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Mr. Conway, requesting a report be submitted after the first week of school to the school committee, reporting on the status of the three students whose children are no longer being serviced at the childcare center. As we heard earlier tonight, many of these children, these students who become parents end up dropping out. And so I think what we're hoping to do, not only to keep track of these three, but to also look at the hundred, we have about 100 students at the high school right now who are parents, but to really, you know, focus on making sure we reach out to those students and tell them about the services that exist in the community for their children, parenting support, whatnot, and get them in school, make sure they're staying in school. So the initial request is for a report right away on these three specific parents who lost the childcare at the high school, but the ongoing report is going to be renewed attention and focus on these students. The second agenda item was regarding student internships. We've talked at length about how our academies at the high school have specific internships that students do, but that our general population, which most of the students at the high school are not in academies, we don't have a program in place to actually develop internships that target those students. So the idea is to come up with a program, and I'll read the motion by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Mr. Conway, to develop a proposal to extend internship development on a small scale for students who are not enrolled in an academy and report back to the school committee. Basically, we know that students who have hands-on experience, who get out into the world, see what it's like to work in the medical field or banking, whatever area interests them, that that's another way to engage them in their education, and we want to try to do more of that at the high school. So we're going to be looking for some recommendations from the high school about how to do that. That was, we also had a discussion on update on the science labs. We are going to be offering, we purchased new equipment and furniture to offer honors biology students at the freshman academy a chance to have labs. We discussed about how we still don't have enough students having a lab experience in science. science, we just don't have the space, but also looking at how we're handling the scheduling of the labs to make sure that we're absolutely making the best use of the space we do have. And the motion by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Mr. Conway, was to have an open discussion about the utilization of labs and the need to address issues with science teachers, to actually ask teachers, what do you need, or how could we help you to do more with labs with your classes, to determine if there's sufficient lab time to meet curriculum needs, and really keep at this issue about science labs. Kids need to have that hands-on experience. The meeting adjourned at 9:00 p.m.
Wonderful report. Any discussion on the report? Accept the report as a report of progress by Mr. Leahy, seconded by Mr. Leary. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. The report has been accepted and placed on file. The next subcommittee report, Finance Subcommittee Report by Mr. Leary.
Thank you, Mayor. Quickly, it was committee member Jim Leary, myself, John Leahy, and committee woman Jackie Dougherty attended, along with Dr. Chris Scott and the Assistant Superintendent of Finance and Operations, Jay Lang. We had multiple things discussed on the agenda. The discussion related to per diem costs at Lowell Public Schools, I think we talked agnostium, so we won't talk anymore about it unless somebody wants to bring it up again. The issue that we did talk about regarding grants was important, because we talked about Part A and Part B. Part A was that we lost two specific grants, and I want to applaud the superintendent and Deputy Superintendent Jean Franco for taking the initiative to go down to the Department of Education to really find out exactly what was going on, why we actually weren't receiving grants. We find out that there's an issue with the DOE, and that because of our proactive stance, that we're back online again to get the appropriate grants that we deserve. So, this is initiative. In fact, I think there's other school systems in the state who are in the same predicament, and we're the first to actually take initiative. So, I applaud you both for taking that. That was the first issue we looked at. The second issue, again, we talked about earlier, there was a motion by Jackie Dougherty, seconded by John Leahy, to request the superintendent explore options available to the school committee for contracting with an individual or individuals to seek and write grant applications to foundations and private funding sources. That was made of a motion by Jackie Dougherty and John Leahy. I'm making a form of a motion now.
It's already been brought forward.
Okay, so we can just go on? Okay. The other issue we talked about was the discussion related to utility costs and energy conservation efforts in the Lowell Public Schools. Mr. Lang discussed our current efforts to date. These efforts, we challenge Mr. Lang to actually ensure that he meets these goals, because there's $100,000 reduction in our budget, which we took aggressively when we did our '09 budget, and we will hold Mr. Lang accountable for that savings. I think the difference that they are at this point is that they are working with the city side and with the City Manager's Office to ensure that we're doing everything possible to reduce our cost. I know that Brian Curly, our Director of Operations and Maintenance, will be spearheading this on behalf of the school department, but working with everyone in an effort to minimize our costs where possible. And I know we'll work with the city side, Mayor, as you articulated at the last meeting, regarding switching light bulbs and other types of advantages that are out there. So, we'll be working in concert with the city. So, I just put that as a report of progress. So, I make that as a motion, report of progress. The other thing, I don't think you have to make a motion for it. The other issue that we discussed was the technology plan update. Mr. Lang reviewed a plan for district-wide technology purchases utilizing our Microsoft Corporation Class Action settlement. This settlement, just for the public certification and for committee members, has been over many years and coming. The previous administration, previous school committees signed on to a class action suit, and they were successful in the procuring monies against Microsoft. And I believe at this point in time, we had a recommendation, we've been putting a plan in place, working with our schools, to buy technology that is so desperately needed in each and every one of our classrooms. So, as all the committee members know, we never spend exactly what we want to be spending on, in particular to technology, and nowhere near where we should be spending. Based on this Microsoft Corporation Class Action settlement, there's a recommendation, a plan totaling $948,802, reviewed with the subcommittee members present, that would allow infused new technology into the elementary, middle, and high school. The purchase and coordination of installation will take place during the month of September. What Mr. Lang is doing with our technology folks is actually sitting down with our folks in the schools to see exactly what types of computers, what types of printers, what types of, you know, computer stuff that they actually need and will be utilizing. So, it's not us implementing something from the central office, it's the schools saying what they actually need. So, in a form of a motion by John Leahy and seconded by Jackie Dougherty, to accept and endorse the technology plan and purchases as presented. It was approved 3 to 0. So, I make that in form of a motion.
May I ask, is the money in the budget for this?
Mr. Lang?
Yes, as I presented it that night, the majority of the money actually comes from that class action settlement. It is almost like a grant that we got from Microsoft for the purchase of the hardware, and then the additional funds are coming from the '08 and '09 budgets for the computer hardware and software.
So, there's money designated for this?
Yes.
Oh, yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, why don't we take a roll call on this particular motion?
You need a second.
I need a second, hon.
Oh, I'm sorry. Thank you. I'm sorry.
Mr. Leary, you brought forward a motion.
Yeah, I'm sorry. I apologize.
Mr. Leahy, second the motion? Okay, roll call on that motion.
Mr. Conway?
Yes.
Ms. Dougherty?
Yes.
Ms. Fattacanti?
Yes.
Mr. Leahy?
Yes.
Mr. Leary?
Yes.
Ms. Martin?
Yes.
Mayor Carfield?
Yes.
Seven ayes approved.
Why don't we accept the report? You all finished, Ms. Leahy?
Absolutely, absolutely. Just want to say we adjourned at almost 10 o'clock. We worked really hard, so.
Good report. Why don't we accept the report as a report of progress and place it on file? Brought forward by Ms. Fattacanti, seconded by Ms. Dougherty. All in favor? Signify by saying aye. The report has been accepted and placed on file. The Athletic Subcommittee Report, meeting of August 20, Regina Fattacanti.
Thank you, Your Honor. We had our meeting this evening, and present at the meeting were our new athletic director, James DiProfio, Bill Smaris, our headmaster, Mr. Conway was at the subcommittee meeting, as well as Mr. Leahy was at the subcommittee meeting, and our deputy superintendent, as well as our superintendent. We specifically spoke about three things, Your Honor. One, we would continue, we would like to continue as a committee to get information specifically here at our meetings about the progress of our athletic teams. So, we had made a motion that we're going to continue the policy, that our athletic director will, at the end of the specific season, at the end of the spring season, will bring graduating seniors here to the chambers and will toast them, Your Honor, will indicate that this particular individual has made these accomplishments and is going on to this particular college, so that the committee and the public at large knows how successful our young people are athletically and academically, because it's the interesting thing is that many of the young people that we have coming before us for athletics also are exceeding, do exceedingly well academically. So, that was the first thing that we agreed upon. The second thing that we agreed upon was that Mr. DiProfio will continue the policy of sending the school committee a newsletter. The newsletter would just be a brief, short introduction as to who's doing what. If somebody made a huge stride athletically on the football field or in tennis, then that would be reported to us, so that the committee will have up-to-date information about what is going on. The third thing, Your Honor, that we discussed was the motion that Mr. Conway made that was forwarded to the Athletic Subcommittee about a month ago. And that motion, at the time that Mr. Conway made it, was to send a letter of congratulations to a coach and the team for an exceptional season. The prior superintendent thought that we should engage in a discussion regarding a policy, but after discussion during the subcommittee meeting, Your Honor, it became apparent that if a school committee member wants to bring a motion forward to congratulate somebody, there should be nothing stopping them from doing so, and that we should celebrate the good things that our kids do, and that we should recognize them whenever possible, and that we should have no barriers and no limitations upon the school committee to put forward a motion of congratulations. So, at this time, Your Honor, we have, we are going to take up again Mr. Conway's motion that we send a letter of congratulations to the coach of the women's or the girls' tennis team, as well as to send a letter to the members of the tennis team itself.
Okay, who seconded the motion? Mr. Conway seconded the motion? The motion brought forward by the Athletic Subcommittee? Any discussion on the motion? Debate? All in favor of the motion? Signify by saying aye. Any opposed? The motion carries.
Thank you, Your Honor.
Is that the full report?
That is it, Your Honor.
You know, watching the Olympics last evening, if anyone watched the gymnastics, there was a young 16-year-old girl, Shawn Johnson, she won the gold medal for this country, and the parents mortgaged their home three times. And the parents were in the audience crying their eyes out. And it was the most wonderful, wonderful moment in watching the Olympics this year or any other year. You know, Michael Phelps did a tremendous job, but this little girl just nailed that exercise, and she won the gold medal, and it was wonderful, absolutely wonderful. So, that's what athletics is truly all about, and those youngsters who go out and participate and work hard, and it should be congratulated, and the parents know how much work is involved. There are, yes?
The minutes of the Athletic Subcommittee meeting?
Motion to accept the minutes of the Athletic Subcommittee by Ms. Dougherty, seconded by Mr. Conway. All in favor? Second the minutes? Signify by saying aye. The minutes have been accepted and placed on file. Are there any other subcommittee reports that I looked over? Okay, reports of the superintendent. We went over the planned parenthood, so we're going to, restructure of the Laurel...
Thank you.
...Lees Alternative School, Madam Superintendent.
Thank you, Mayor. In keeping with the work that's being done within the Special Education Subcommittee, to reiterate what Mrs. Dougherty has spoken about earlier in the evening, we are looking at our alternative programs throughout the district, our special education programs, and Murphy and I have had numerous conversations with staff about the programming that we're presently offering and how we can expand that program, build capacity within our district to provide high-quality programming for children that presently are being placed out of the district, and for future children who are coming into our classrooms who would benefit from high-quality program in various areas. It should be noted that Lowell Public Schools presently does have excellent programming in various areas. It's just that we do face a critical issue around children, as you mentioned, Ms. Dougherty, with emotionally needs, learning disabilities, and I really do think that it is our responsibility to look at the present level of offerings and how we can expand those, not only for the children who are presently with us, but again, for those children who are placed out of the district. We did start looking at the various alternative schools. The Laurel Lee School is presently being examined very closely. Some staffing changes have been made there to, in order for us to address some of the curriculum programmatic issues that we feel need to be addressed at that school to ensure the children are receiving appropriate programming, as well as we are looking at ways that we can expand and open up other programs within the district. As I mentioned in the first FYI packet that went out to you, we will be putting together a proposal. Again, it's a complex proposal, so it will take a few more months for us to closely analyze what the needs of our students are, and then to develop a program, and then, obviously, there's an issue with space within the district where we would house particular programs that we would develop. So, it's definitely going to be a long process for us, but I think that the committee should know that in earnest we have begun, and we are looking at ways to expand upon the good work that our special education team has already in place, and to look at ways that we can improve. I do think it's important, though, for viewing audience at home to know that we are not talking about expanding special education programs or bringing children back into the school district that are presently placed out of the school district and placing them into regular education classrooms. That's not what this is about. This is about developing specialized programming for children with significant needs that they presently require substantially separate classroom, and we're looking to expand those type of programs. So, I really think it's important that people know that it's not, we're not developing an inclusionary model of special education beyond what we presently have that puts children into classroom without supports for either staff or for children. So, just to make that point, that's all at this point on that, if there's any questions.
Ms. Fattacanti?
I looked at the FYI that was sent to us, Madam Superintendent, to the Superintendent. And we're going to hire an interim apprentice for the Laurel Lee Alternative School?
Yes.
So, my question is, if we're going to be embarking on such major changes there, my concern is that this person is an intern.
Right.
Not a person who has substantial knowledge.
Right. Thank you for the question and concern. Basically, the approach that we're taking at the Laurel Lee Alternative School right now to run that program successfully, it really has to be a team approach, and we have to bring many of the professionals within our organization that presently work for us to work with the team of teachers that presently exist. And we do have a need for, to build capacity. There's a couple issues that went into determining that title, everything from contract issues to the cost of that position, given that we needed to beef up other areas of programming. We couldn't spend a lot of additional monies on administrative costs, but that we still wanted to ensure that the program is a very complicated program, and that it not only has a big academic piece that we're presently addressing that needs to be addressed, but also it has therapeutic issues that are extensive. So, for example, behavior specialists need to be hired, and programs have to be developed for kids so that kids are safe on task and can access the curriculum. So, that's just one position, but if you would like, I think what might be helpful is if I present to the committee at the next meeting or at the Personnel Subcommittee meeting, I'm not exactly sure where it goes, but if it go, but to present exactly how the program is being structured, it still is a work in progress, and the personnel that goes with that restructuring. And again, conversations have been had to how we can make, at the Laurel Lee and at the LeBlanc, we have similar programming. So, we are looking at options too of making it a K-12 model, and what would that administrative structure look like? Doesn't necessarily mean that the building would change, but just we're looking at all the different ways that we can raise the level of accountability of what goes on in those schools. It's a great program at the LeBlanc, we're pleased with many of the things that go on there, but we're looking at ways to, you know, to take it to scale. There's good, again, there's good work and good programming, and we're looking at what works in those programs, and we'd like to expand it within the district.
So, Your Honor, to the Superintendent, I'm not quite sure you addressed the issue about the interim, and maybe at the next school committee meeting, you can have a report for us about your restructuring?
Yes.
And the reason you selected an interim and not a full-time staff member. An interim, an intern is also learning.
That's correct.
What I hear you telling me, what I hear you saying to me is, there's going to be a lot going on at that school.
Correct.
So, my concern is that we have somebody who's just learning and who already, instead of somebody who already knows what needs to happen.
Right.
Because your plan there is quite impressive, and I'm concerned that the intern is capable of fulfilling the plan.
Right. We share your concern, and the individual which we will also, once that's finalized, that has been discussed and we have met, but it's not quite public yet, I believe you will be pleased with the selection and will better understand that the person is qualified for the position. However, it is an interim position, and that person will be working on administrative skill sets with the principal of record at the Lincoln School. But I will provide a full report.
That'll be great. Thank you.
Mr. Conway?
Just a quick question to the Superintendent. This individual that you'll be picking, they would have the qualifications of a principal certification? Is that the type of person?
No, not necessarily, because it is a therapeutic setting, and so we need somebody who does understand behavior modification issues, and we do need them to be, they are certified, and maybe I can turn it over to Sue with regards to Mr. Conway's point with regards to the certification issues that pertain to the Laurel Lee position. So... So there's a mix of options that we can choose from, but the way you presently have it set up, there's not a principal at that school, as you're aware, and that the principal of record is at the Lincoln School. So the principal of record, in fact, has the legal responsibilities of the principalship, so it gives me a little more latitude, because they're not on their own. The principal at the Lincoln School has a very active role in the school, and actually, it's under her guidance, actually, that many of these decisions are being made, what's best for the school, because she knows it very well. So we have really, every, basically every meeting about this particular issue has involved Ann Murphy, Sue Mulligan, myself, and as well as the principal of record and other professionals in the Special Education Department, because there are many issues and concerns that we are trying to balance and address everything again, which will be detailed in a report to you, but everything from contractual issues that, any process that we go through, I'm just committed that it will not end in a grievance, and I'm committed that we're going to be able to provide high-quality programming for our kids. Those are the guidelines, but just, I can appreciate the fact that you would like that report in full. This is because school is opening up in five days, we've been, and I do appreciate Ann and Sue's assistance, as well as it's been discussed with Mr. Lang and Madgeena as well, just with regards to the high-quality program that we want to ensure are in all our alternative schools, and they've just been great to work with.
Just for clarification, then, this individual is going to be obviously certified in Special Ed, and obviously, an individual that has experience working with students.
This population of students, that's correct.
Right, so it's not like it's a new, it's not like it's a new individual just coming out of, out of school, that has just been newly certified.
It's our person, it will be an internal person to us. We know their work, we know the caliber of what they have to offer.
Right, so it's not, right, I mean, the point is, this person has, is going to have obviously some type of experience that can handle this.
Tried and true.
Sure, okay, thank you.
But not a principal, I just want to be clear that your concern is shared by everybody around the table, and there are many, again, we'll be covered more in full in the report.
Madam Superintendent, the restructuring of the Laurel Lee School.
Yes.
Would definitely be a positive move for the children.
That's what's motivating this, Mayor, and we do think.
Thank you, that's all I like to hear, that's wonderful. Accept the report, accept the communication as a report of progress and place it on file by Ms. Martin, seconded by Mr. Leary, all in favor, signify by saying aye. Report has been accepted and placed on file, the removal of the modular classrooms.
Could I ask Mr. Lang, please, to address? Thank you.
Sure, thank you. You have a report that I prepared for the superintendent regarding the modular classrooms at the Daley School. There were three modular classrooms that the school department has actually owned for a number of years, I believe actually dating back to '89, and they had fallen out of disrepair, and we were working toward actually having them, a recommendation made, and having them removed from the school this fall. Upon my return from vacation, talking to Brian Curley, he had spent some time over there this summer, and they'd really fallen into much more serious disrepair than we had thought. They weren't used at all last year without much activity in them, additional leaks in the roof and whatnot had developed, and we were just very concerned about keeping them on the site, just with their physical condition, and also the possibility of continued vandalism and water infiltration, things of that sort. So we have actually worked with a contractor over this current week, and as of today, they've actually been removed, the contractor is just doing the final site cleanup, and they'll be actually off-site on Friday. So we worked very quickly to get them off-site, they started the job Monday, was over there today, and they were actually removed, they were just doing the site cleanup. So by Monday, when the staff and students arrive, they won't be an issue to be dealt with this year.
Mr. Lang, did the school department own those modular classrooms?
The school department had, I believe they originally in 1989 had leased them, and at some point, I couldn't find out exactly when, at some point they'd been purchased, so they were owned by the school department, and again, because of the enrollment at the Daley, it had dropped from about a high of 940 students down to about 650 because of a grade level reconfiguration. So they weren't used at all last year, and they just continued to fall into disrepair.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion or questions for Mr. Lang? Accept that report as a report of progress.
Report of progress, Your Honor.
By Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin, placed on file, moving ahead with the report, Madam Superintendent, personnel report.
Thank you, Your Honor. In your packet, you will be in receipt of the personnel report, as well as the list of eligible teachers.
Move approval on those reports, Your Honor.
Move approval. By Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy.
I think Mr. Leahy and I would like to, would like to identify a person in particular, please. Mr. Leahy?
Right ahead.
Thank you. We just want to say congratulations and thank you to Arva Skrekas, who was over at the Sullivan School for many years, and she was a great asset to the school, and she'll be deeply missed, thank you.
I can't believe that she's retiring, Your Honor, because she loves her position. I hope that there's nothing there that has forced her to find herself on the outside rather than on the inside, because it would really not make me very happy at all, but I do wish her the best in her retirement. I know she has spent eighteen years taking care of our youngsters, and it's, I thought she was going to be doing it another eighteen years, so it does, it's unfortunate that she is retiring.
And I think the entire committee would like to thank and congratulate all the retirees, especially.
Move approval, Your Honor, and a letter be sent?
Yes, a letter be sent of.
Of thanks to all the retirees.
Congratulations, thanks. Seconded by Ms. Doherty, all in favor, that motion, signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Approved, passed, and accept the report as a report of progress.
Motion to accept the list of eligible teachers, Your Honor?
Yes. Seconded by Ms. Martin, all in favor, signify by saying aye. That has been passed. List of eligible teachers.
That report is also in your packet.
Home education?
List of eligible teachers.
Yes, I just made a motion to, we're on home education now.
Really?
There's three.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry. Home education.
Thank you, Your Honor.
I recommend approval of the request, Your Honor. Make a motion to approve the request.
Motion to approve the request for the parents who like to educate their child at home, motion to approve by Ms. Doherty, seconded by Ms. Martin, all in favor of the motion? Roll call.
Aye, roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Is there any new business? No business? Okay, convention and conference requests.
Thank you, Your Honor. Early childhood, district supports specialist Patricia Murphy-Panchard, I hope I've pronounced her name correctly, and adult education teacher Patricia P. V. requests permission to attend the DOE-required annual ABE directors' meeting to be held in North Falmouth, Mass. on September the 24th and 25th, 2008, cost of $275 per participant to be paid by the Even Start Grant, no substitutes are required.
Move approval, Your Honor.
Move approval by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Martin, roll call.
Mr. Conway.
Yes.
Ms. Doherty.
Yes.
Ms. Fattacante.
Yes.
Mr. Leahy.
Yes.
Mr. Leary.
Yes.
Ms. Martin.
Yes.
Mayor Caulfield.
Yes.
Seven yays approved.
Communications?
Just one, Your Honor, there is a Red Raiders rally Sunday, August 24th, at 5:00 to 6:30 at Colley Stadium. The school committee will assist in scooping ice cream, because there is a Sunday extravaganza, as well as a scavenger hunt, and, Your Honor, there will be some discussion with the sports teams specifically about, about good conduct and the conduct of our athletes. And so we want everybody to know that on Sunday, August 24th, at 5:00 to 6:30, there is a rally, Red Raiders rally at Colley Stadium. Thank you, Your Honor.
And I just want to let the committee know that all the new lights have been installed, the bulbs at Colley Stadium are guaranteed for 25 years, and the illumination of the field is vastly improved. And I would like to have, if the committee or the superintendent would send a thank you to the Lowell, City of Lowell Electrical Department.
Motion, Your Honor, to send a letter of thanks to the City of Lowell's Electrical Department.
Yes.
For their outstanding work at the Colley Stadium.
And Carol Robert Sheehan and his staff, because they were actually like the subcontractors, and they saved the city an awful lot of money, they did an excellent job. Professional personnel, anything on that?
No.
Ms. O.
Thank you, Your Honor. I did have one request, when the report on the Star Close School comes out and that's public, can we?
I'm waiting for that.
Yeah, can we get a copy of that, too?
Oh, you will.
Thank you.
You will.
Okay.
And it will all come out for everyone to read.
Sure, thank you.
Civil service, a German, or anything, discussion? Motion to adjourn by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Mr. Leahy, it's been a hot, sometimes debated meeting, but that's what government's all about. Have a great weekend and enjoy. Move to adjourn by Ms. Fattacante, seconded by Ms. Doherty, thank you.